Normally, we have a regular place for that.
And Ms. Berkowitz is here too, from CMCT. She's going to make the presentation.
I call to the agenda for August the 27th, regular meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Melton, would you lead us in allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we are very good at seeing our failings and the failings of others. We all see things that we want to fix, and we want to fix them now. Sometimes that causes us to drift to disappointment, impatience, and even fault-finding and blame. We ask you to help us better balance our views of the world, to see the progress, the maturing, the beauty, and the good, the projects that we've undertaken, and the decisions that create an even better place for people in Powhatan to live. We don't want to be Pollyanna, nor do we want to be overly dwelling on the negative. We ask that you give us the guidance to find the balance between the two. Amen.
Amen.
Board, are there requests to change anything on the agenda, as the agenda has been presented by the county administrator, Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the agenda to 8A to add Jay Sargent Reynolds Community College and their annual presentation, and Dr. Jones's last meeting with us. I mean, Dr. Jones. We're still in the educational system, aren't we?
You just upgraded me by calling me Eric.
So, we're moving item 8A, the present 8A, to 8B and C, therefore. Second to this motion?
Second.
All those in favor changing the agendas? Aye. Are there any other requests to change anything on the agenda? Then I entertain a motion to formally approve the agenda as we have changed it.
Some move?
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda has been amended, say aye.
Aye.
Now, this public comment period, our first of two public comment periods. We, as a board, are very interested in what people have to say to us about anything that we do for the county, on any matter. If you are here to speak on anything that's not as a public hearing, we ask you to speak now. Use three minutes of your time, if you would. Please don't insult anyone else, individuals or groups. Please don't use this time for public campaigning. Please don't promote a business. And please stay focused on the issues over which this board has any responsibility. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes unless you're representing a group, in which case we allow five minutes. In consideration of others, if someone else has already said what you have to say, say ditto and sit down, if you could, please, to save us time. This will also be the time for Ms. Berkowitz and Tony Hackenberg to speak to us. So, Ms. Berkowitz, if you would like to go first?
Well, Mr. Carver's down here.
Ms. Berkowitz, for the audience, make sure that you tell us who you are.
I certainly will.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Tucker, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Voorhees, thank you for inviting me. I am Susan Berkowitz. I'm the Executive Director of Goochlin-Powhatan Community Services. And I come before you to bring our performance contract, our annual performance contract, which is posted on our website. I also have a copy of it. It's kind of a big document. If you're interested in reading it in paper, let me know. But it is posted on our website, so I hope that you will take a chance to look at that. I bring it to you because the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services wants you to be aware of what we're doing. I sign the contract, they sign the contract, and the county does not, but you need to be aware of what we put in it. So, ask me any questions that you have about that. Mr. Voorhees also asked me to do a brief update, and I would like to do that now. I have passed around the VA CSB Annual Report, and that's from last year. The new one's not out yet. But every CSB in the state has a page, and we're on page 35, so if you want to take a look at that. That is just an overview of all the services for folks who have needs in the area of mental health, developmental services, and substance use disorder services in Virginia. We serve Goochlin and Powhatan. There are 39 other boards. Most recent updates, we are in our second year of opioid prevention and treatment grants. Our community coalition, Mr. Nordvig, serves and is a valued member of it, and thank you very much. We're doing a lot of awareness and giving away a lot of drug disposal kits. We're providing a lot of mental health first aid and assist training to the community to help people who are addicted to opioids. We also have, part of that grant is also treatment. So, if there is somebody who needs treatment for opioid addiction who has no insurance, we have funds to help people get into treatment. This is our second year of that as well, so that's federal grant money that we're using for that. We are, as well as all the community services boards in Virginia, about to implement same-day access, which means that, on a schedule, folks can come to us and immediately get an assessment and a referral for services and assign to a provider and an appointment with a physician or a nurse practitioner and a provider in a very short period of time. That's not how Virginia has operated in the past. We received some money to help with that, so we're hoping to implement that September 1st. If you have questions about it, it's going to be on our website. The hours will be on our website when you can do that, both in Goochlin and in Powhatan. And those are access to all of our services. That's the first step of what Virginia is calling Step Virginia, which is System Transformation, Excellence and Performance in Virginia. I had to write that down because we only call it Step Virginia. But there are nine services associated with that, and the General Assembly has mandated that we do this by 2020. It is going to be a challenge for them to mandate, to allocate the money that will be needed for this. But the first step is same-day access, and folks, when they're ready to get services, that they can get into them quickly. And that's going to be real exciting for us. Medicaid expansion is new for us. I'm sure you've heard a lot about that. Our system is providing, giving back state dollars for the match for that, with the assumption that we can build for new people to make up for that. We, as a CSB, will lose about $40,000 this fiscal year and about $98,000 next fiscal year. So, I'm hoping that it goes the way they're saying it's going to, and we'll be able to build that money back, so our budget will still be whole. But that's going to be a challenge. That's a new update for us, and that's going to be a challenge. The beauty of it is that people who now can't access health services and mental health services will be able to. So, it's a good thing to work towards. We have a robust array of regional services, and that's how the department is allocating a lot of its money now. We have hospital utilization specialists, a crisis stabilization unit, substance abuse treatment and detox, jail services. And, like I said, most new funds are being allocated towards regional services right now. But we're part of Region Four, and that's a really good, we work really well together, and we develop new services together. As always, when I come before you, I want to thank you for your support, and I want to thank you for your fabulous Board of Supervisors, my Board of Directors that you appoint. They're all just wonderful and supportive and fantastic, and thank you very much for that. I'd like to announce that I am retiring at the end of December. You may have seen the ad for that. I was talking with Mr. Tucker, and I'd be happy to come back in December and introduce you to my successor. I hope that that person will start before I leave and will be able to do a smooth transition. And I am happy to answer any questions anybody has, and, as you know, give tours, tell you what kind of services we provide. I wanted to be brief tonight, but I'm happy to go into more detail, because I can talk forever about it.
Thank you, Susan.
Certainly.
Mr. Nord, would you like to piggyback?
I sure would. Thank you for your kind comments. As many of you know, I'm the Chair of the Rural Substance Abuse Awareness Coalition, or ARSAC, as we call it, and we work with CSB and probably 30 other organizations. We have a very strong showing at our monthly meetings. And the point I want to drive home here is, our motto is saving lives in Goochlin and Powhatan Counties. And that's exactly what you do, and I want to thank you just as much as if it were Fire and Rescue or Sheriff's Office. You are helping to save lives in our region. You can't put a price tag on that, so thank you very much for that. I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
I was at a meeting in Washington a couple months ago, and it was made known to me that there are things called mobile treatment centers for areas that don't have a brick-and-mortar dedicated treatment center for opioids and other substances. I had never heard of that before.
Honestly, sir, I haven't either, but I'll be happy to look into it.
I was going to ask if you or your successor might want to look into that, and my understanding is that it would be at little or no cost to the local region. So, anyway, if that-
Well, thank you for bringing that up. I'd be happy to look into that.
I thought that was a tremendous idea for the rural areas, especially here in Virginia. We're so close to Washington, I think that would be an easy fix, so.
Yes.
And I'd be happy to work with you to try to get one of those.
Good, thank you very much.
Thanks again for your service.
And I'll pass your comments on to the people who do the work. I just run the agency.
I can relate.
Thank you, Mr. Nord, for what you're doing for Central Virginia vis-à-vis this issue. Any other comments or questions of Susan?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. How big is the expansion of Medicaid a problem for you?
It's both an opportunity and a problem. I think it's a cash flow issue in the short term. In the long term, I think it's a benefit to all Virginia that we expand Medicaid. So, I think that's the easiest way for me to answer that. It's a short-term challenge to, because the reductions, the system as a whole is giving back $11.1 million this year and $25 million next year for the whole year. And the challenge is whether or not we can earn that back with Medicaid, expanded Medicaid billing. So, it's a short-term cash flow issue.
But you feel confident over time there'll be a smoothing effect?
I think so. We've done this before. We did it when the waiver first started, and we gave up a lot of state dollars to make match for that. So, the system has done this before, and I, it'll be rocky for a bit, I'm not going to lie, but that's my rockiness. That's not going to be the people who are receiving services' rockiness.
Again, thank you for all your years of service to us and the folks in Powhatan and Goochlin County. We'll miss you.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Susan, you represent, as Mr. Nordvig has said, a lot of the people who are relatively invisible in their community, and we appreciate what you and your staff have done for many, many years to make them less visible and more accessible to the various helps that you offer. You'll hear more from us before you retire.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hackenberg?
Thank you. I think it's great you're giving these various organizations an opportunity to update you. I represent the ELC, or the Extension Leadership Council, which is an advisory council to our Extension Office here in Powhatan. It's made up of five appointees, each one of our BOS appoint one. I was an appointee from Mr. Tucker several years ago. I've since moved into Mr. Melton's district and still serve on the ELC. The unit coordinator also appoints five to seven to round out 12 volunteers on the council, and then there are four staff members. We meet quarterly, the second Tuesday of the first month in each quarter. It's open to a Board of Supervisor, if you ever want to come and meet with us. We meet at 8:00 in the morning on that Monday, and we serve breakfast. You're welcome to come, if you would like. My experience is both on the Powhatan ELC and the State ELC. I've been on the State ELC, I was appointed to that, gosh, about six or seven years ago. I'm planning District Coordinator for District 15, so I work with the ELCs in Richmond and the seven surrounding counties. That organization is being realigned, I want you to know that. We haven't met for a year, but it will have some new focused membership, and we will actually focus those people more on support of our Extension Offices. I want you to know that the Powhatan ELC is, and Extension Office are very highly regarded at the state level. Our purpose at the ELC is to be a liaison to the community, to find volunteers for some of the programs that the Extension Office promotes to our citizens, critique existing programs that benefit the citizens, bring up new ideas and possibly new programs, and most importantly, and it's becoming more important, advocacy both at the local and the state level. I'd like to go into some of the key programs. ANR, or Agriculture and Natural Resources, they do, at Virginia Tech, water and soil testing. We do pesticide training for safety, safe handling and disposal, fertilization recommendations, submit samples for weed identification and plant disease, farm visits, educational programs for ag on timely topics such as lawns and poultry, monthly discussion groups for beef and equine owners, and the Volunteer Master Gardener Program has a help desk to answer questions when people call into the Extension Office. And as you probably know, Fighting Creek Park, we've got a native plant trail, a pollinator garden, and of course, the historic garden behind the Sheriff's Office. FCS, our Family and Consumer Sciences, we share an agent with Amelia on that. We assist the residents with issues relating to economic stability and improving quality of life, financial education and money management, health and wellness education, Volunteer Master Food Program, food pantry, the Powhatan Fair, food demonstrations, senior nutrition and other senior programs, Health Department and WIC Monthly Outreach Program falls in that category, meal planning and food preparation, home food preparation and preservation, food safety training, cooking for crowds. In other words, we support a lot for elderly and even new families starting out. 4H is for ages 5 through 19. The goal there is to develop citizenship, leadership, and life skills. We have a 4H camp every year, and we train 4H volunteers to head up that camp and run, help run the camp. We've got after-school programs and summer day camp offerings, and some of these school in Richmond programs are embryology, Farm Day, Reality Store, Safe at Home, and Safe The accomplishments of the ELC, reorganized the volunteer recognition program, we've supported the demonstration garden, we assist financially and pay some of their expenses, we do fundraising for, to help do that, and we help guide the situation analysis every five years. A couple of major challenges that we do have, citizen awareness. People don't know what we do, much like we're trying to get citizen awareness in the greater Richmond area about Powhatan, what a great place to come and spend a day. Angie's given me one idea we might do with the real estate people to help promote how they might use especially larger tracts of land, and maybe we can go out and visit with those people and tell them more about the Extension Office, Department of Forestry, Farm Bureau. Some of those people don't have a clue. I didn't when I bought my 33 acres, and luckily, I ran into the Forest Department, and they put me in touch with all these other facilities that were in the county. And then, limited financial resources. That's always a case, but if we could, at some point, have a full-time FCS Extension Agent and not share with Amelia, we could increase those program offerings. Horticultural program, and then 4H, we would love to increase after-school programs if we could get an associate or an assistant in that area. But those are the two areas that we could improve upon, I guess. Last thing I want to do is I want to leave copies of our quarterly newsletter. I think you guys get this in your email, but I know you get a lot of stuff. And I want you to recognize it, and hopefully, you'll take a look at it. It tells you all the things that are coming up-
And give you more money.
...in the next quarter. I don't think we have a thing in here asking for money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hackenberg, for all you do for so many people, from the seniors to the children. We really appreciate it. Pass on our thanks to all the 12 members of your board, if you would.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you. Make sure that Ms. Berkowitz and Mr. Hackenberg sign in, so we've got your record of your attendance tonight, right here in the corner of the table. Thank you. Mr. Carver?
Good evening. I'm Jim Carver. I live at 4245 Steger Creek Drive. I do not believe I'm speaking on any item that has a public meeting on later, so I want to be clear. First thing, I just wrote this down. I wanted to, having visited the Cumberland County Board of Supervisors on multiple occasions lately, I wanted to express my thanks for our Board of Supervisors for conducting professional matters. That's, if I could be so bold, it's amateur hour to our west, and I'll just say that. It's unprofessional and amateurish, and I'm glad I don't live in Cumberland County. I don't mean to disparage anybody that lives in Cumberland County, but their leadership is horrible. So, the reason I came tonight, and I'll try to hit my three-minute mark, and if you dong me, I'll turn around and throw my pen at you. I'm concerned, so generally, I'm concerned like everybody else is with the Cumberland County landfill. But I wanted to stress it on one area. I think everybody's got their own unique area they're looking at, but I did, I'm an amateur statistician, so I did some drilling in on the, some VDOT numbers. I reached Kevin Reichardt and have traded a few notes with him and spoke, and I drilled in on my concern that I don't think either VDOT or the state, or I don't think there's enough attention on the impacts, the potential impacts of traffic. And I want to try to quantify some of that for you this evening. Jen, I'll send this to you all in an email by the end of the week. I used two sources that were provided by Kevin Reichardt. Number one was the, he sent a Route 60 corridor study that's similar to the Timmins study that's the eastern part of the county, but this is the western, the Maiden's Road to Cumberland County line. It was done by the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission. That was a source, and I understand its purpose. But I also, Kevin steered me towards the 2017 VDOT statistics, where they have pretty robust statistics and a database, and I searched and did some digging through there. So, I focused on just one segment versus the whole Route 60 corridor. I focused on one segment only, and that segment is from the Cumberland County line to Route 629 at Old Tavern in Trenton. It's approximately 4.1 miles, I believe. In the study, it's comprised of two segments, I think from Cumberland to 630 and then 630 to 629, the distance is the same. So, that one segment in the VDOT study, it's about 4.1 miles, and what I discovered, first off, I still need to work with Mr. Reichardt to verify I'm doing apples, apples, oranges, oranges, because it depends on what study you're looking at or what statistics, but the VDOT numbers were an AADT, or annual, average annual daily traffic, I believe, count of 6,400 for that segment, and then they break it out by type of vehicle. And this kind of alarmed me when I started looking at it. So, about 95% of that is two-wheel and four-wheel regular vehicle, and that makes sense. The other five is broken between either two-axle truck, three-axle truck, or truck-trailer combination thereof. So, that's 5%. When I just did the quick math, that's about 300, 320 of that total number, AADT number, is trucks. Well, looking at the hosting agreement from the vendor that's proposed the Cumberland County landfill, they publicly advertise, I believe it's 350 to 500 round trips, that'll go through that segment. So, at a minimum, at a minimum, we're going to double the category of truck traffic on that segment, at a minimum. So, a little additional information. The VDOT study lists, and this is something I had to do a little learning on, but they've got road classifications, A through F, I'm sure you're all familiar with. The VDOT study already considers that segment at category F. I'm not sure why, and I, I'm waiting for a call back from Mr. Reichardt. F being near capacity and possibly congested. The other study I looked at was a Route 60 corridor study. So, it's got a little different numbers, and it's got, I think, what it calls a flow rate of approximately 400 in that segment. It's got condition code C, and it covers all the way to 2040. So, it's in five-year increments, 2014 to 2040. It doesn't, of course, factor the additional 350 to 500 truck, category truck, traffic within that segment. I did the math on the flow rate of 400 number, which I don't know if it's an AADT number or not, and that's got approximately 20 trucks in that segment, which I think is low, but I could be wrong. If we were to look at those numbers, the increase in truck within that segment is obviously exponential, from 20 to 350 to 500 round trip. So, and I'm just trying to quantify some of it. A couple more things, and I'll be done. In the Route 60 study, they talked about a potential for safety improvement, PSI projects, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, but I wasn't until I read this. Within this rich, VDOT Richmond district, that segment from Cumberland County line to 629 is the 78th worst within the VDOT Richmond region.
I think, Jim, it's now the 117th, but it's still bad.
Okay, still bad. No, thank you. It's still bad, and I don't have the updated study. And the one stat that caught my eye was 20 total crashes just within the segment, 15 fatalities slash injuries. So, you can start to surmise and make, you know, understand impacts. You know what, the last couple things I'll leave you with, I didn't factor any school bus stops. I haven't even had the time to do that yet, and I will. I'll ask a quick, I'll just throw this out for thought. I don't believe any of this is factored in any of your comprehensive planning yet. I'm sure you may have to consider doing that. And that leads me to my final point. You know, this is obviously a very impactful event. We can quantify it, and we, I think, you know, I don't have the authority to get VDOT involved or anybody involved, but I would hope that, and I know the board is aware of this and concerned about this, but I think we really need to grab VDOT, or grab whoever we need to do, and really make them understand the impacts of those roads from a safety standpoint, school safety standpoint, and maintenance. I mean, I work in IT management. Lifecycle sustainment is the big thing, and so I think it's a big concern to be able to sustain those roads after all this impact. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carver. Just for information, the figures that you just quoted were the exact figures that Ms. Emo from the School Board and I, as a member of the Board of Supervisors, presented to the Cumberland County Board of Supervisors. So, they've seen those numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Silberbauer? Good to have you.
Good to be had. Members of the Board, Mr. Latchney, Mr. Voorhees. Don Silberbauer, 1426 Donovan Mill Lane. My topic is affordable housing. The cry for affordable housing in Powhatan continues with obviously little research. This outcry must be for apartments and townhouses, which I'll call high-density, since there's an adequate supply of home rentals, and in less than five minutes, I found 26 homes listed at under $250,000 just minutes before I left for this meeting. As for apartments and high-density homes, in Western Chesterfield County, at or very near Westchester Commons, there are 1,869 townhouses and apartments that are either under construction in various stages of development or planning, and I've got the news articles here. Some of these are senior citizen and subsidized apartments, in particular Winterfield Crossing. These developments are only a short trip to Powhatan County line and even closer to employment in Richmond. Excuse me. One development- One development has already announced pricing, which starts at $1,000 a month. There also has been an apartment advertised here in Powhatan for the last six months, of which a resident mentioned in a recent Board of Supervisors meeting that was at the end of his driveway. I perhaps am the only one who apparently called about this apartment, which is a two-bedroom, single-bath unit renting for $790 a month, and I'll call that affordable. So-called need for affordable housing is being filled. One more item regarding apartments and townhouses and high-density construction, water. The majority of our public water comes from Chesterfield, which I believe to be a Carbs Creek project, is on life support or dead, which leaves Chesterfield as our source. Powhatan will continue to rely on Chesterfield for the foreseeable future. Currently, our water allocation is 572,000 gallons per day, according to Mr. Melis of our Public Work Department, of which we are using 202,000 gallons per day, leaving 370,000 gallons per day available. According to U.S. Geological Survey, a person uses from 80 to 100 gallons a day. If we look at 225 townhomes, apartments, let's say at Red Lane as a possibility, at 80 gallons today, at, per day, that's a lower number, times 225 units, double occupancy, that's 36,000 gallons per day, that equates to 10% of our remaining allocation at a minimum personal usage. Add the Walton Group with another 300 homes down close to Chesterfield, that adds another 48,000 gallons per day, totaling 84,000 gallons per day, or 22% of our available water supply for just two projects. This will help reduce our $2.2 million taxpayer-paid burden for the underutilized public system, but doesn't include any additional water should be needed. Couple questions. What if there are a couple of children in some of these apartments? Water usage obviously goes up. Are we planning for more multi-use, high-density developments? How many more? Will Powhatan residents only occupy these apartments? Doubt it. What's the right number of townhouses or apartments to stop those asking for affordable place to live? If we allow this idea of more high-density development to continue, how long will it take before we run out of water and need to purchase more? What do we do for economic development, particularly restaurants, breweries, wedding venues, distilleries, and the like with high water usage? I trust you will look long and hard before turning Powhatan into Chesterfield. Remember, water is the new oil, a scarce commodity that will be more expensive and harder to get as time goes by. Thank you.
Thank you for your research, Mr. Silberbauer. Anyone else wish to address the board? Mr. Byerly, welcome tonight.
First of all, I want to thank you all for your time and your efforts that you put towards making this county better, all of you. And I'll be very brief. It won't take me the three minutes to say what I want to say. I was here at the meeting, the special meeting on August the 9th, I believe it was, when Mr. Miller was here discussing the NCS survey, which I think is a, well, the survey itself is, you know, for everybody to interpret as they look at it and read it and find their, draw their conclusions from it. Mr. Miller spoke to us, you all, and everybody here that night, gave us a 55-minute presentation, PowerPoint, which was nice and wonderful, and I brought with me the brochure or the leaflet that you guys distributed that night. And I think that there's a couple of things that maybe folks that were not here or didn't see it on live video, live streaming, didn't know about the survey. And I'll give you some factual points that he pointed out that I think everybody should be reminded of, that the other points can be interpreted however you interpret them. But of the 1,900 surveys that were sent out, 676 were returned, and that was about a 35%, 36% return rate, which was very high, according to him and what he had said. The normal, I guess, was about 15%. Of those that were returned, there was a statistic that he brought up that I thought was quite interesting. 70% of the respondents were aged 45 or older. 37% of those respondents lived in Powhatan County for 20 years or more. 21% were over age 64. Those are the factual ones, I think, that we can gather from what he presented that night. The two areas that he seemed to emphasize that Powhatanians were very interested in was the Sheriff's Department protecting us, safety, firing EMS. And I think that those benchmarks or all the statistics they got from them exceeded the benchmarks nationally. So I think that as a county, we definitely owe law enforcement, first responders, and everyone involved in that community of safety and providing safety for us a kudos. And the economy was the second one. When I was looking through, I noticed that he listed three key findings. The first one he listed was residents of Powhatan County enjoy a high quality of life and plan to remain in the community. The second one was the safety issue. And then the third one was the mobility, which I think is almost interpretation. Again, highways, paths, maybe I did go past my three minutes. Highways and path byways but through the county. But to close it up quickly, as opposed, I don't want to go past it too far here. The one thing that I got to thinking about is he gave his 55-minute presentation, and we, the taxpayers, paid $23,500 for that, or close to that. And there seems to be a lot of emphasis on the EDA, the Economic Development Authority in the county. A question came to mind as I heard him talking that night, that he needed to get back to his hotel. Here's my question. I don't know the answer. Did anybody invite him to stay in Powhatan at maybe the mill at Fine Creek? Because I think that would have been a great opportunity for us to show how great a county we are as opposed to sending him back to Richmond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Byerly. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Good evening. My name's Dr. Michelle Lacsonin. I'm the Executive Director for Southside Center for Violence Prevention. We are the sexual and domestic violence agency serving the residents of Powhatan County. One of our programs is Madeline's House, which is the domestic violence shelter portion. About 20 years ago, in September, Madeline Gerhart Mitchell, whom our shelter is named after, was tragically murdered by her estranged husband, and we are holding a vigil on the anniversary of that death on September 6th. So I just wanted to inform you all of that. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do and what your organization does, and thank you for coming all this way to speak. Some of us will be there. Anyone else wish to address the board? Not seeing anyone step forward, I'll close this first of our public comment periods. For those of you who are following along, we're on item number seven on our agenda, our consent agenda. Members of the Board, any comments or changes? I'll entertain a motion to approve the considered agenda as presented by the County Administrator.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so be it. We're on item 8A. Dr. Rhodes, it's good to have you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Before Dr. Rhodes speaks.
I just wanted to say, I'm Ann Moore, and I have-
Identify yourself.
Ann Moore, and I have been the representative for Powhatan County for the Reynolds Community College Board for the last four-plus years. And it has been an absolute honor. Thank you all for appointing me. Thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to spend these quality four years with what I think is a first-class gentleman and president of a community college. So before he speaks tonight, and before, this is my last time to speak on behalf of Reynolds, I wanted to introduce the girl that is going to now sit in my seat on the Board, and that's Dr. Sally Baze. Sally? She is highly qualified. She will do an excellent job. She comes to the Board with a tremendous amount of educational background, and she will be tremendous help, not only to the Board members, but to our new president of the college, Dr. Paula Pando. So Sally, you want to say a couple words, and then I'll introduce Dr. Rhodes.
Thank you very much, Ann, for that gracious introduction. It's my pleasure to also have an opportunity to thank each member of the Board of Supervisors for your support in affirming my nomination to serve on this Board on behalf of Powhatan County. Ann has done a wonderful job in serving in this role for the past several years, and she sets a tall order to follow in that regard. But we are very appreciative of all of your hard work on behalf, not simply of the college, but in representing Powhatan County as well. Ann has done a wonderful job, not only in her service to the college, but also in being a mentor to me as we undertake this transition. I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Rhodes publicly for his distinguished tenure as president of this college. There aren't too many presidents that I know of who receive the accolades that have come his way, deservedly so. Many of you undoubtedly saw this insert in the Richmond Times-Dispatch. And he as well has been extremely welcoming and very helpful to me as we all undertake a very major transition in the life of the college and certainly in your personal life as well. So we all wish you the very best. He is described as a passionate, innovative, caring educator and friend. And just in the brief period of time that I've had an opportunity to get acquainted with him, I certainly would as well affirm all of those wonderful qualities. So, Dr. Rhodes, it's our pleasure to have you with us this evening. And for the last time, everything that Sally has said is true about this man, so we're going to miss him. So your last presentation.
Thank you. You know, had I known that retirement, that people were going to say so many great things about me, I would have retired 20 years ago so I could do it again, but I won't be doing that, I suppose. So I just want to really briefly mention three things. And I want to thank you, then I want to show you some of the statistics for our presentation, and then I want to give you a very brief true story of something that happened in Powhatan that I think will result in my writing with my wife, who, really, the illustrator children's book with a real value to it. So first of all, let me begin by saying that I've enjoyed the pleasure of serving with some of you on different boards. Some of you have given me golf lessons on the golf course, and I know several of you, you've had children who've attended Reynolds. So, and I lived, I've been here 16 years, and I spent more than half of that time actually as a resident of Powhatan, up just across the street from Mill Corridor Golf Course. And I loved living out here. I remember, you know, I built my, I built my own boat dock and started on a Friday afternoon at 4:00 and worked until after dark and went to bed and got up at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, excited about working on it some more. And of course, my neighbors didn't know I went to bed. They thought I just worked on it all night. But I mean, living in Powhatan is just a real luxury for people. In fact, had it not been for the 10 hours a week that I saved in driving back and forth, I probably would still be in Powhatan and still probably moving near Hilton Head. But I want to thank you for the board appointments you've made. You know, I have 15 college, 15 board members appointed by six jurisdictions, and I can tell you that Powhatan has always appointed A-level board members, and I won't go into specifics about which jurisdictions don't quite follow that trend, but you've been really stellar at the folks that you've had. And Angie and Dave and I have worked on the Capital Region Collaborative together over time. I think you're maybe chairing, is that correct this year? So congratulate, so I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, from my wife Nom as well. Thank you for being a big part of our lives. Let me take a minute and walk through some numbers here. This is the one you want me to use here. So, let's see, I guess I can see the one up there. First of all, you've seen this before. I consider this our loftiest value statement, and it says, "Is today's decision in the best interest of our students?" And it doesn't matter what the topic is. If we're trying to make a decision with the college, we really need to focus back on this. And sometimes you can imagine when we get stuck on something very difficult, and this is what we lean. It's the same thing for you, "Is today's decision in the best interest of our Powhatan residents?" And so you find that in every conference room at the college, by the way. I want to thank Sally Baze for agreeing to continue service, and certainly Ann for her wonderful time. She has, Ann has been, as you, no surprise to you, she's been one of our great cheerleaders on the college board and has lots of energy and has played a major role in our recent board retreat that we had. So, we, at the college, have served 15,000 students this past year, a little more than that, 14,000, almost 15,000 degrees and certificates since the college started. And then we've served 346,000, rounded up to 350,000 students since the college opened in 1972. How big is that? If you had that line of people stand arm-in-arm, the line would form a human chain from Richmond, Virginia to Cleveland, Ohio. So that's a lot of people who've attended Reynolds. And by the way, that's only credit. We serve about 10,000 employees a year in workforce training. I don't know what city that would get us to, but it would be a bunch more people. So, Powhatan County in particular, we had 166 Powhatan residents attend Reynolds this past year. 53 of those were high school students earning college credit. In fact, a few years ago, when we started this program, it's called the Advanced College Academy, students start out as freshmen in cohort group, and they stay together all four years, and they're, the summer after their second year, their sophomore year, they start taking Reynolds Community College classes at the high school, and they actually end up graduating with a two-year associate degree. Technically, they graduate with our two-year degree about two weeks before they get their high school diploma, because we graduate in May and the high schools here graduate in June. But it's a wonderful program. I can tell you, we originally thought we would have to partner with Goochlin County, just because being two small rural school districts, but there was enough energy and enthusiasm in both of those that we actually had our own class. So 25 residents graduated this past year, and it's an increase of about 30% from the previous year. And the first cohort of 19 students, this is the Reynolds Advanced College Academy that I mentioned with the degree, and there's a nice picture here of those students as well. And it was just fun to see them at the Segal Center with their red, you know, sashes, and I always have them stand, because it's amazing how many students collectively in our region we have going through that program. So this talks about, I can't read the number there, I'll see, $8,000 in scholarships, which is a $3,500 increase from the previous year for Powhatan residents. And we also have 57 residents participated in training programs. This is direct workforce training, most of it's non-credit. I would say if I had to, if I had to simplify our mission at the community college, because there are lofty, verbose ways to talk about what we do, it's really pretty simple. We prepare people for life and careers. And the life part of it is, believe it or not, customer service. When I talk to employers, guess what it is? That they all wish they had more employees with good customer service skills, which is much more difficult to teach than technical things. And then, of course, the technical skills are needed also. So what's new at Reynolds? Let me tell you that we are partnering with Steve Markell from Markell Corporation to build, actually, a culinary program. We have a culinary program already, but we're building kitchens at Reynolds, which will be on Churchill, and it's to help that particular part of the inner city, which is part of the most impoverished part of the city. And we will also, even more than the culinary center, will be the bus, our bus that goes back and forth between the Param Road and the downtown campus, and we'll also loop there. So the expression that we've captured is something great is cooking in Churchill, and we hope that's our culinary students. It's planned to open a year from this fall, so about a year from now, we should be actually having some kind of grand opening for that. And then also art, you've all been on campus, so you know that we, it bothered me a few years ago that we had so many walls that were just blank. I mean, it looked very sterile. It just wasn't welcoming. And I'm not an art expert at all, my wife is an artist. So I started a project where I went to my foundation board and asked if they thought that any of the companies would adopt space, and before you know it, we've gone from zero pieces of art to now we just went over 750 pieces of art. And, you know, I have to tell you that it's a little difficult to know what that means in numbers. In fact, I called my facilities guy, Mike, and I, this was about a year ago, and I said, "Mike, I'll give you three months. I need for somebody on your facilities team to measure walls for me. Do not measure restrooms, don't measure windows or doorways, don't measure private offices. If it's a classroom with a whiteboard, don't measure the whiteboard. And then I need to know how many linear feet of walls we have with art and without art." He came back and gave me this fancy number, which nobody's going to remember, but it's easy to remember. And that little yellow thing on the left, you've seen police officers at intersections measuring? I bought one of those on Amazon myself and gave it to him. I said, so the end of the story is we have six football fields of length of art now on the wall- on the walls, but we have 25-foot ball fields of walls that we still need art on." But hey, you have to start somewhere, and I think that's great progress. Also, I'm very excited, we have Dr. Paula Pando as our incoming president. I turn into a pumpkin at midnight on Friday, and she starts on September 1st. She's actually gonna, I've arranged my calendar so she can get her things moved in Friday afternoon, because it's Labor Day. I didn't wanna have to have her wait three days to experience the joy of being the new president. And she doesn't have the access code yet to go in on the weekends and turn the alarm system off, so she's coming in Friday. But I think you're gonna really enjoy her. She's full of energy. She was born in New York. When she was about three or four months old, her family moved back to Chile with her brother and her parents. Her father apparently was a professional basketball player in Chile, of all things, right? I think of soccer, I don't think of basketball. But anyway, when she was four years old, then she moved back to the States with her family and spent the rest of that time in New Jersey. So she's the first woman president the college will have ever had, and also being Hispanic, she's fluent in, of course, Spanish and English. But I think you're gonna find her to be, you know, an ex. People ask me, "So Gary, you're retiring, what's it like?" And I tell them, it's really, it's kind of a mix of three emotions. It's basically, it reminds me of when I left home and went away to college. I have one twin sister, so our parents got the double empty nester syndrome at one time. So I'm excited about retirement, I'm also a little nervous about it, and then I'm very nostalgic about it, because we're gonna have a lot of friends and people that we won't get to see, some again and some for a while. So I've been here 16 years, and like I said, more than half of that time was here in Powhatan. In fact, my, the board chair, Connie Maslow, is the board chair who hired me when I came. And so, you know, it's, it's good or bad, it's her fault in part two, I guess. And everything we do at Reynolds is about completion and graduation. And this is a scene, a picture here from the Segal Center, where we actually hold our graduation at VCU Segal Center every year. And then this is, again, our loftiest value statement. So the one thing I wanna end with is, I wanna share with you, it's a true story, and you're all from Powhatan, so you'll appreciate this. But one of the things I'm gonna do in retirement is, I'm gonna write a children's book, and I'm gonna have my wife who can draw, I can't, my handwriting's terrible, but she's gonna do the illustrations for it. And there's a great lesson. In fact, I told this story to my faculty senate, which is kinda like a union. We don't have unions here, but it's the faculty leadership. And I, I said, 'cause we're talking always about transparency and honesty and doing the right thing. And I said, "I'm gonna tell you a story, and I want you to tell me if you think I did the right thing," because I wasn't totally honest with somebody who asked me a question in this story. But here's what happened, and this is true story. So about four or five years ago, when I lived on, actually, Lake Randolph, which is right across the street from Millquarlet, on the lake, my wife and I, I had our own golf cart also, and we, you know, we golfed at Millquarlet. And it was on Labor Day, around 5:00 o'clock, we took our golf cart up the street to play nine holes before dark and got on the first green, we're getting ready to putt, and this little baby goose walked up on the green. It was so small, it didn't even have feathers, it just had brown fluff. But we noticed it, didn't think anything of it, we finished putting, got back in our cart. And this little baby goose is running behind our cart as fast as its little legs would go. Again, we noticed it, and then I said to my wife, "You know, the second hole, there's a pond on the end of the second hole, those of you who play the course. If it follows us, I'll put it in the pond, and it'll swim away, and life will go on." So we got to the, to the green on the second hole, and sure enough, it was right behind us. So I picked it up, it promptly pooped on my shirt, I put it in the water, and it made a circle and came back again. And I said to my wife Nam, I said, "Something's really odd here, because baby geese, you know, you don't find them by themselves, their mothers are very, very protective animals." So I said, "Let's take it home, go to the big lake," and we always have Canadian geese there. So sure enough, we got in our golf cart, rode home, got in our little pontoon boat. In the middle of the lake, there were 25 or 30 Canadian geese. And we took our little boat up there and put this little baby goose in the water, and it stayed, and we scurried back. And I changed my shirt, we went back over to the golf course and started again. And as we're getting ready to putt again, the second time on the first green, this woman came walking up the side of the green, and she said, "Annie, Annie, come here, Annie. Have you all seen a baby goose anywhere?" She asked me, right? My wife said, "Well, we can't tell her what we just did." So I said, "We're gonna help you find it," right? So we went back in our golf court home, back in the boat, back out in the lake, and the geese were all gone. And so we started looking around the edges, you know, the yards of the people on the lake, and sure enough, on this grassy hill were 25 or 30 Canadian geese. And right smack dab in the middle was a little brown fluff ball. So I pulled my boat up to the shoreline, and I said, "Annie, Annie, come here, Annie." She walked down through the gre, to the geese, down the grassy hill, jumped into the water and swam up to my boat. So I picked the little goose up and got back in the, you know, went back home, got back in our golf cart, went over to the course again and found this lady on another hole. And said, "We found Annie." The purpose of it is, and I told my faculty senate, I said, "So she asked me if I'd seen a baby goose, and I, I didn't say, 'We absolutely did.'" Let me tell you what we did. But I think it's a great lesson, a moral lesson for, for young kids, maybe and adults too. So that's one of my takeaways, when I get that project completed, I will be mentioning Powhatan, so, you know, it's just a fun part of my life, that sometimes these odd stories happen, and you can't make that up, right? I mean, that's just how life is. So again, let me close by saying you've been wonderful. I feel honored to have lived here for eight-plus years, and I admire you and respect you tremendously. So thank you for your support for Reynolds, and I'll ask you to, I hope you support President Paula Pando as much as you have me. I think you'll find her to be a real joy, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rhodes. Comments, questions?
Just a quick comment.
Shirley.
Dr. Rhodes, being a 1976, I won't call myself a graduate, but did attend there in 1976 to get ready to go to a four-year school. And then having the ability to go toward the campus with you one day. And what I saw that day was really enlightening to me, and that was the pride that you took in the facility. But it instilled that pride to the students. And they were, you know, well behaved. You talked about the smoking areas and their respect for that, the art on the wall, and just the energy that you projected out was feeding the rest of the campus. And you left people and students and adults that, and better than that when they got there. And I left her going, "Wow, what a great place this is for our community," and thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Shirley.
Gary, before I make my comments to you, I would like to briefly make some comments and direct them to Ann Moore. Ann, I very much appreciate all the help that you provided, Gary, over your term of service, the help, the assistance that you provided to the board you served on, and the professional manner in which you represented us. So thank you so much. And Dr. Baze, we look forward to having you continue the tradition. As Gary said, we've had some really good representation of the J. Sergeant Reynolds Community College Board, not to mention Connie Maslow again, who hired Gary. And what a great decision that was 16 years later.
Thank you.
Gary, I've watched you down through Richmond Regional Plan and District Commission at collaborative meetings, and I know the respect and esteem that you have of colleagues and peers in the Richmond region. It's unparalleled. And I think I speak for everybody for the service that you provide, the educational opportunities, the vocational opportunities, as you said, the career enhancement that you provide this region, not only just Powhatan, it's been outstanding. We're gonna miss you part and half.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Mr. Nordvig.
Gary, since I saw you last, my second son got his associate's degree in the community college system. They've attended both Reynolds and Tyler. So I personally have benefited from your leadership, and I really appreciate that. Another point I wanna make is, I'm 100% Scandinavian, Norwegian and Danish, and my family tradition of having a goose at Christmas has just been ruined by your story. I appreciate that. You know, our whole government is based on an educated populace. This form of government, the founding fathers said, "Does not work if the people are not educated." So thank you for what you've done for the country and my family. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Yes.
And we saved you a bundle of money by having your students go to Reynolds first.
I wasn't gonna bring that up, but man, you saved me a lot of money. This guy's great.
Ms. Campbell.
Dr. Rhodes, I don't, I'm sure you don't remember, but I actually sold you your membership at the Powhatan YMCA when you and your wife came in, probably about 15 or 16 years ago. And your enthusiasm and zest for life was apparent when you walked through the door, and it's continued. So thank you for bringing that to the county and to Reynolds. It's been certainly a difference maker for all of our children. My daughter is in the ACA program, like Mr. Nordvig. I'm hopeful that it will save me piles and piles of money when she completes that degree and goes on to a four-year university. And so that's been a great program, that's been wonderful for her and the, and the other kids. The cohort is a very powerful thing. They took their course this summer and ended up at my house quite a few afternoons, the whole pile of them. So a bunch of good kids doing neat things. So I think that's a great experience. And your quote, I think in the last presentation you shared with us, "Is today's decision in the best interest?" And I just put a blank line, and it's on my bulletin board at work. That is a great, great filter through which to run things. So thank you for sharing that with us. It's left a mark on me.
Thank you, Angie. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Gary, your name for us has been service. Literally, when I think of you, I think of service. Few men in my experience have had a vision of greatness and then did something to make it happen. That's not lightly said. You've been strong, innovative in your leadership, you've kept us informed, you always manifest respect and dignity, you always have an eye to the future for your school, for your faculty, and of course, for your students. You're congenial, you've always been approachable, you've always been positive in your outreach to all of us. The partnership that you've created with the school division here in Powhatan is par excellence. We're very pleased with the work that you and they have done. And it's hard to say goodbye to someone who has been part of our community for as long as you have. And I want you to know you go for love.
Thank you. Thank you, Carson. Thank you all. Appreciate it. God bless. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Should I sign in?
You're signing out.
Oh, I'm signing out.
Good night.
Thank you.
We're going to move to item 11A on our agenda, because we have a time certain on it. So the first thing we wanna hear is 11A, 02018-25. Mr. Voorhees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pompey will handle this item.
Ordinance O-2018-25 is a request by Powhatan County to rename a portion of Quail Run Road, which is a private road off of Worsom Road, to Quail Run Hollow. Quail Run Road splits into two roadways, both of the same name. Powhatan County has learned that this situation makes it difficult for emergency responders to determine which direction to travel when responding to calls for service in that area. To provide clarity for emergency responders, Powhatan County is proposing renaming the western segment of that roadway to Quail Run Hollow. Changing the, changing the road's name would impact seven different addresses.
Questions of staff? Comments? No. Mr. Melton?
We'll be in public hearing.
You don't wanna say anything before the public hearing? I'll open the public hearing on this matter. If you wish to speak to it, please come forward, give us your name, and limit your comments to three minutes, if you please.
Hello, it's good to talk to y'all. My name's Roy French. I live on the western portion of Quail Run Road, all the way down at the end. And the problem we have is the fact that the road's not marked good enough for the upper road. Eddie McConaughey is the first house that lives on that road on the right, and he made a post with all of our addresses that live on the western portion of the road. And being the one that lives at the very end of it, me and my brother and the Johnsons right there, Tom and Loretta, anybody that, that has a problem finding anything on the upper road, always come to us, 'cause we're at the very end. So they come down there and ask us where these addresses are. I've got the address book right here in my phone book, and I've never had nobody ask where any of the residents were on our section of the road, because we've got this post that's got all our addresses. I got a picture of it. It's got Eddie McConaughey made it, and it's got everybody's address with an arrow pointing toward the right, toward the west portion of the road. And everybody has got all of their driveways marked with their numbers. So anybody that comes down there knows where to go, and GPS goes all the way to that where the split is on the road. You start losing GPS and cell signal when you get about probably 300, 400 yards down the road. But the GPS will take you right there. I mean, to solve this problem, you don't have to change the name of the road and cause all of the businesses that live on that road to have to go through the hassle of changing all their stuff. All they have to do is put a post up for the east section and put all their addresses up with arrows pointing that way, and have them put their addresses in their driveway. It's a simple solution. You don't have to go through all the trouble of changing the name of the road. You know, I mean, it's as simple as that.
Thank you, sir. Please sign in. Please sign in.
Sign, pardon?
Yes, sir. Anyone else wish to address the board on this issue? Please.
Good evening, I'm Regina Reams. I have property on that road. Actually, our road is the original, or our house is the original grand tour. There has been difficulty ever since the road had to be split because of a right-of-way issue. I can see how it would be an issue for EMS to get there. You know, when my dad lived there, he did have some medical issues, and they had to come see him. And on a couple times, it took them longer to find him, even though he had his address plainly up there, it was 1235. They would go around the back. So as a property owner up there and the original grand tour, I think you need to rename the road as a safety, you know, feature. I know where he, you know, he is at the very end, you know, on the river. And I imagine it is, you know, kinda hard on them. But if it comes to somebody's life, change the name.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you sign in for us? Anyone else wish to address the board on this issue, please?
I'm David Fins. I live at 1247 Quail Run Road. I'm at the western section. I have four young daughters who have dialed 911 several times by practicing, and we've never had a problem with EMS coming, usually it's the sheriff, because they hang right up. Also, to reiterate, we have, there are four businesses, four businesses that operate out of that, out of the lower road. We would all have to change our addresses, and also all the invoicing, invoicing our vendors and everything else, we would have to change that, along with our personal information. The upper road, to my knowledge, has no businesses on. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you sign in for us? Anyone else wish to address the board on this issue? Please come forward. I'll close the public comment on this issue. Gentlemen, Ms. Campbell, comments, questions?
I have questions, Dan. Hi, Andrew.
So, Andrew, was there a public meeting that you actually notified and held a public meeting to ask for citizen input for this situation?
Yeah, yes, sir. There was a citizen meeting on Thursday, April 26th, earlier this year, where we had some citizens attend to provide feedback on this potential issue.
And, and the gentleman just spoke about businesses. I know that evening I sat in the meeting and listened. I think there was talk about, there were businesses on both sides of the upper and the lower portion of it, you know, whether it was four or five, but that was, wasn't that the conversation that evening?
That's correct. They indicated concern with the businesses on both sides of the roadway. So the commissioner of revenue pulled their business license information, and it was about equal numbers on both sides of the road. On this western half, based on the records from the commissioner of the revenue, there's three business licenses.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, staff? Mr. Nordvig.
I do, thank you. Thanks, Andrew. I'm reading from the packet here that it says that the road split with the same name. Powhatan County has learned that this situation makes it difficult for emergency responders to determine which direction to travel when responding to calls for service. Powhatan County has learned. From whom did we learn this? And then I'm actually going to ask, we've got the fire and rescue chief here, and we have the sheriff here, so I'm going to ask each one of them if it's difficult to find this place and help make my decision. So, comment?
Yeah, from my understanding, a couple of years ago, there was a study that looked at our addressing countywide and identified some potential issues with that system, and this was one of the areas of concern from the consultants that did that addressing study. So, this is one of the first issues we're looking to address and tackle, and so we did some research, held a community meeting, and we reached out to our EMS folks as well, and they might be able to provide a little bit more information on how easy or difficult it is to respond to those addresses.
Okay. So, this was flagged as a potential problem? Okay. Thanks.
Chief Singer, good to have you here.
Yeah, I'm Mr. Nordvig. I believe it came up when we were doing the CAD system and the new GIS that we were doing for that, it was flagged, like you said, by the GIS people who came in to do the mapping and all that stuff. They're like, well, this is, how are we supposed to do this because there's two different directions that it goes? And I would say that the two calls that I've been down there in the four years I've been here, both of them units went the wrong direction, including me on the one structure fire we had down there one night. We ended up on the wrong side of the road, had to come all the way back around, go back down the other side of the road. So, it's very confusing down there. That's one of the reasons we're off the program.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Thanks, Sheriff Nunley. Do you have any experience with this road and confusion?
Yes. We, I can't say that we've had the same difficulties. Our cars are not as large generally as the chief's, and it's pretty simple for us to take a car and turn around or anything. I don't recall any issues down there as far as any of the sheriff's department vehicles having trouble finding the residents. But like I said, it's much easier to turn a charger around than it is a fire truck. So, I really don't have a comment on it.
And is there a way of, I mean, is it, you know, looking at the CAD system or whatever, is there a way that the sheriff's office is notified of conflicting addresses or difficult to find places?
We can ask dispatch anytime we're dispatched to a call if there are any notes about the address, and they can enter each address in the CAD system and say, when you hit the intersection, turn right. So, they can put an alert on the residence that says some difficulty in finding this residence, turn right, third house.
Okay.
Now, so they can handle it there at the CAD level.
Thanks.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nordvig. Any other questions, comments?
I have another question.
No, sir. No, sir.
Public hearing's closed. It's in my district. First of all, I attended the community meeting that night, and there were many different discussions on what would be the least impactful. Staff did a ton of research to try to figure what would be the least impactful. There was, you weren't, what staff realized was you're not going to make everyone happy in this situation. I agree with Ms. Reams to, if you're, if it's a couple of minutes, and it's a couple of minutes that possibly could save somebody's life, I'm not sure we want to do that. It is a shame that these citizens that are impacted are going to have to change addresses and update, you know, you know, letterhead and all those type of things. But I get, I go back to what one of our biggest charges as a board is to talk about safety, and this is a safety issue. And as much as it pains me to have to somebody to change addresses on checks and all the other things, I go back to safety. So, therefore, I'm recommending we approve the renaming of the road as recommended by staff.
Is that a motion?
Make that in form of a motion.
Is there a second to this motion? I'll second the motion, and my comment's going to be the same as Ms. Melton. Public safety is our number-one charge. Any final comments?
Yes, sir. I want to thank Mr. French. I'm a big common sense person. I don't like big government bureaucracy. That's one of the reasons I ran for office. And I can almost tell you got this all worked out, and I appreciate that kind of horse sense. That's something that we need in our citizenry. I am going to support changing the address based on what I just heard from Chief Singer. If fire department people are getting confused, then I agree that that's a problem. And we are charged by the law from the Commonwealth to uphold safety and public health first and foremost. So, I'm going to support that change. Thanks.
Mr. Clerk, would you poll us?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Thank you for all your work, and thank you for coming tonight. We're moving on to item eleven B, zero, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-three.
Case number eighteen dash oh-five dash AZ is a request by Powhatan County to increase the maximum permitted height of structures within industrial zoning districts from thirty-five feet to forty-five feet. Taller structures may be permitted with approval of a conditional use permit if this amendment is approved. There are currently two industrial zoning districts within Powhatan County, light industrial I-1 and heavy industrial I-2. Both zoning districts are classified as village growth area districts, and again, if this amendment was approved, the maximum height within those districts would be forty-five feet unless a conditional use permit is granted. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on August seventh, two thousand and eighteen, and recommended approval of this request with a vote of five to zero.
Questions of staff? Mr. Nordvig?
Thanks again. Andrew, I understand this was changed from, I think, forty-five down to thirty-five, and now it's being changed back. Is that correct, and do you know why that happened?
That is correct. On page one ninety-six, there's a history of how we measured height in industrial zoning districts here in Powhatan County. And from nineteen seventy-four until our current ordinance in two thousand and fourteen, the maximum permitted height was four stories or forty-five feet unless the CUP was approved. In two thousand and fourteen, the height was reduced within industrial districts to thirty-five feet, and that aligns with maximum height in most of our other zoning districts as well.
Is that the reason for it, just for alignment?
I'm not sure why it changed, but it does align with those other zoning districts. Someone else that might be able to answer that question as well?
Great. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Pompey, what does a ten-feet get a business? I guess it's the same question Mr. Nordvig is asking. What are we doing this for? What does it get us? What does it get the business? I'm sorry.
It provides a little bit more flexibility for our industrial users that are moving to the county. We had one instance where a business said they have some equipment that's thirty-five feet that they'd like to keep indoors. So, this gives them a little bit more flexibility in designing their building to ensure that they can accommodate equipment that meets their needs, but also have a building that aligns with the county's vision for how it wants to grow. So, it provides a little bit more flexibility to accommodate the equipment they may need.
All right. Any other questions of staff? I'll open the public comment period. Does anyone wish to speak to this? Mr. Conka, always good to see you. Welcome home.
Thank you. James Conka, nineteen twenty-two Mosley Road. I apologize, I'm very late to the party. My travel schedule has precluded my commenting on this issue until this point. I believe that this board, Mr. Chairman, listens to its citizens, and I think one of the things that you've heard loud and clear, especially recently, is the citizens' desire to keep Powhatan beautiful and to preserve their night skies. I want to ask the question, and especially hearing the dialogue back and forth, why you would consider approving an ordinance that limits your ability as a board to control growth? It's my understanding that in the existing limitations of thirty-five feet, you do have the ability to grant a conditional use permit to allow a business to build higher. So, you're not losing that ability by changing this ordinance. What I do question is that every I-1 and I-2 parcel is appropriate for these structures, and you identify them as only two districts, but these are many, many parcels. I doubt that anyone in the county has surveyed every parcel and looked at the suitability of that parcel for a forty-five-foot structure. Most trees are not forty-five feet tall, and we are a neighbor to an I-1 parcel, and I have another property that is across the road from an I-2 parcel. In both cases, if a forty-five-foot structure were built, that would obstruct views, that would be taller than the surrounding trees. I would ask how you propose a new business would screen a structure that exceeds the height of full-grown trees. So, you know, kind of to summarize, the board gains nothing by changing this rule, but you do lose the power to oversee these decisions case by case. My biggest objection to this is it silences the voice of the citizens. When you change this to forty-five feet, you're preapproving all of these parcels across the county, and anybody that wants to speak in opposition to this, you know, it's already a done deal. So, I would ask those who are, you know, maybe on the fence on this to not allow this change. You still retain the flexibility to allow structures where they are appropriate, but in considering safety, we do have ladder trucks that may be able to reach these buildings if there's an issue with fire. But in the case of both properties adjoining my own, there's no water, so they better be prepared to carry buckets of sand up there and throw them on the fire because having a ladder truck doesn't do them any good. So, just once again, I ask your consideration and, you know, not tie your own hands and keep the thirty-five-foot ruling as it stands on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conka. Would you check in for us? Mr. Pompey, is Mr. Conka's comment correct, that is to say, it exists at thirty-five now, but a CUP allows it to go to forty-five? Is that correct?
We, in the current ordinance, we don't have that CUP mechanism to increase height. We just have the flat thirty-five-foot
Gotcha.
Rule.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Conka.
Yes, appreciate you letting me speak. Tim Britton, I live one-one-two-one Bradbury Road. I live right around the corner from Jim, and pretty much ditto what he was talking about. My family moved to Powhatan about twenty-five years ago, and we moved here for the greenery. We like how it is and just kind of worry about when something like this can come. Kind of like a blanket statement that we welcome, you know, any type of businesses there regardless of what it is. I like the idea of a conditional use permit if that is the avenue for it, if somebody needs to have an exception for it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to comment? Not seeing anyone come forward, I close this public comment period. Ms. Cavill, gentlemen, comments, questions?
I've got, excuse me.
One comes before two.
Mr. Chairman, I may be confused. I'm reading the staff description of the item, and it says, if approved, this amendment would allow structures within the I-1 and I-2 zoning districts to be constructed up to forty-five feet in height. Taller structures may be permitted with the approval of a conditional use permit. So, this would set the bar automatically at forty-five feet, and then if you wanted to go any higher than forty-five feet, you'd have to get a conditional use permit. Is that correct? That's correct reading of the way it's presented, yes. Okay. So, if I may have a second question, I'd like to call our Economic Development Director, Brett Shardine, up. Mr. Shardine, from your perspective, does this help economic development or bringing economic development into our industrial zone development areas?
I think it absolutely would, and, you know, understanding that the rural character is critical here. You know, we surveyed other localities and what are planning best practices, and you'll see in this list, if it was increased, put back to the old forty-five-foot or CUP for higher than that, we would still be relatively low as compared to some of our peers in the region. You know, and that's okay, understanding that we are rural. We do want to keep those controls. We don't want to set it two-hundred feet or a hundred-and-fifty feet, as you'll see some of our neighbors in the region have theirs set at, you know, what's appropriate. And those localities is different than what's appropriate here. But we believe that going from thirty-five to forty-five was appropriate, gave the flexibility to bring in some better light industrial. But if you want to go higher than that, then you need to involve the public and come before the board. Regarding the history of it, it wasn't here when the two thousand and fourteen amendment was changed, but I know that was done, you know, with the help of a consultant. I don't know if that was something where it was just kind of boilerplate that they put it in, or those that were here then might remember if there was some specific discussion on that point. But I wouldn't be surprised if it was just one of many things that were changed as part of that big update that was done. But yeah, for economic development, believe it would be, allow us to attract more of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nordvig?
I would like to see this left at thirty-five, and I guess I'll officially propose that we come up with something that puts the CUP language in there so that anyone interested in coming in, in the area of commercial development, knows they can read it for themselves, they know they can at least ask and see if they can go forty-five or higher than that. I am the representative of District Two, and as I'm fond of saying, we're the only district in the county with a railroad. I drive through that area down in Mosley fairly often, going down to Hall Street, and there are industrial parcels down there. And I really, I always ask myself when projects come up, what does this look like? What will this look like through my windshield? And I don't think I'd like forty-five-foot-high buildings in a cluster around that railroad track area. And Mr. Conka brings up a couple of very good points. Some of the trees down there, I can tell you right now, won't screen a building that tall. They won't. It will decrease the rural feel of Powhatan County. For the sake of money, is that where we're going in Powhatan? I philosophically just completely disagree with that approach. The other one is the interesting point about that it silences the voice of the citizenry. I am on, I'm seeing this issue from both sides in District Two because we have a business, Classic Granite, who's already had a neighborhood meeting, and it's out in the public. They require a somewhat tall building for the cranes that move the large slabs of granite around indoors. That's a good thing. I want to keep all that inside, keep the noise inside, keep all of that robot machinery moving around inside. That's a case right there where I would be eager to approve a CUP in that location and for that type of business. But to broad-brush forty-five feet anywhere, that would affect four hundred and forty-seven acres and eighty-six properties. I think that's going a little too far if Powhatan wants to keep rural. And as Mr. Conka also pointed out, there really is no downside if we leave it at thirty-five and we put in some language, black and white, that has a CUP. I think we get the best of both worlds there, and I don't think we should pass that opportunity up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I concur with Mr. Nordvig's comments. I'd rather see it at thirty-five with the CUP allowing to go to forty-five after the hearings. Other comments about this issue? Mr. Melton, Ms. Cavill?
I have a couple of points.
Bill?
Air Planning Commission recommended five-zero. I think those people work really hard to bring good ordinances to us. I went back and dug through, I sat on many of the meetings, as Mr. Cox, who's sitting in the audience at any of those meetings, I cannot find anything in all of my notes and piles in my garage that my wife thusses at me about that reference changing this from thirty-five to, from forty-five to thirty-five feet. I could not find any rationale, any documentation, any dialogue why it would have been reduced. And I don't mean this, Mr. Britton and Mr. Conka bought their properties when it was at forty-five feet. You know, they knew it was forty-five then. It is unfortunate that it is an industrial area. Looking at other localities, we're much lower, I shouldn't say much lower, we're lower than a lot of other localities. And my experience with CUPs for businesses, it's a very difficult thing to do to go borrow money from the bank on conditional use permits. Some people, some people argue, but, you know, I would say that from a business perspective, I think it's a good ordinance at forty-five feet. I'm going to support Air Planning Commission recommendation and staff's recommendation, so.
Ms. Cavill? Any final comments? Mr. Nordvig, would you like to move?
I will in just a second. Just to follow up there, again, you know, we have this constant tension here in Powhatan. It's been here for the three and a half years I've been on this board of do we go for growth and money and commercialism, or do we keep the county rural? I think there are ways to find a happy medium there, and this, to me, is one of those ordinances where we have the opportunity to stay mostly rural and yet seize opportunities like Classic Granite that seem to be the right fit in the right location and still be able to put more of the tax burden on the commercial side. So, I haven't heard anything that's changed my mind, I guess is what I'm saying. So, I'm going to ask the chairman and Mr. Lashney, the county attorney, do we, what do we do here if we want? I would like to see thirty-five feet with CUP language in black and white added to this. So, how do we proceed to do that?
So, we would defeat this one and then direct staff to bring back the corrected, the way you want it for reconsideration.
Okay.
There's no need.
Or?
Mr. Nordvig can make a motion to
Mr. Norvig can make a motion to reduce the structure, the proposed structure height from 45 to 35 with the footnote that says maximum structure height may exceed 45 feet with approval of conditional use permit, that 45 likewise becomes 35. So it's a motion to approve the ordinance with the 45s amended to be 35s.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So it's currently at 35. While we would be amending the current ordinance, it says it's at 35.
We're not, we're not amending the current ordinance. Well, we're amending this proposed.
This proposed.
This, this ordinance is in front of you. Mr. Norvig's motion would be to amend this thing that's in front of you, turn the 45s into 35s. What it does is it leaves the 35 where it is, but by turning the 45 into conditional use language, that makes the conditional use language 35 as well. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So it's really just a motion to where it's 45, turn it into 35.
So any questions about the way that Mr. Lashney has read the proposed ordinance? Mr. Norvig, are you okay with the way you're hearing?
And this is a two-step process. Mr. Norvig has made a motion to amend, so it's a motion to amend what's here. First, you'd vote on the amendment that Mr. Norvig has made. Once, let's assume his amendment is successful, then you'd vote on the amended ordinance itself.
Got it.
Okay, so I move. And for this part, do I have to say in accordance with public necessity, convenience, et cetera? Okay. I motion, I make a motion to amend O-2018-23, reducing the 45 feet to 35 in the document, added with a footnote to...
Don't even need that. If you amend the, where it says 45 feet to 35, you've done what you're trying to accomplish.
Let's do that. So there's my motion.
Comments? Quiet, a second. Questions on the motion?
Need a second.
Do I have a second? Mr. Norvig? I'll second it. Questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, I'm not in support of the change of the motion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just while there's discussion, I thought I'd add this for consideration. You recently had taken action to make the Planning Commission the review and approval body for the aesthetic design, the design book. Wonder if you would see a role for Planning Commission? I don't know, members here might speak, you know, whether they're interested in that or not. But would you see a role for Planning Commission to review increase in height? That would be, you know, potentially middle ground between by right 45 versus full CUP, which can be a longer process. This would be something where it still gets into the public realm and there is still discussion, and it's approved individually, but it would be a more expedited process than a full CUP. So just an idea for consideration.
Well, there's a motion on the floor now.
Well, let me piggyback on what Brett just said. Tom, this is a question for you. Assuming that, you know, we go through this two-step process and we go back to 35 feet with the understanding it can go higher with a conditional use permit. In an instance where somebody's coming in for rezoning, how does this work? Do they come in for rezoning and conditional use permit at the same time?
No, that, I mean, this affects industrially-zoned properties. So theoretically, somebody with an industrial zone property that wants to go to 42 feet, he would have to come in and ask...
But if you're not already industrially zoned?
If you're not already industrially zoned...
And you're coming in for rezoning?
You could do both together.
So you would have a public hearing on the rezoning and another public hearing on a conditional use permit?
I believe they could be processed as one transaction if that were, if somebody came in for an industrial rezoning, I believe we could process as one. Now, they may want to separate it, and probably if I were advising the applicant, I'd say separate it because you may win on your rezoning and lose on your height. You don't want to put all your eggs, I mean...
Well, I'm trying to work myself through this.
So, I mean, my advice to an applicant would be, you prefer doing both so that, you know, maybe you get your rezoning, you don't get your 42 feet. And so it would be in the applicant's best interests, apply for a rezoning and a CUP separately.
Now, I'm trying to put myself in staff's position when you've got somebody that's coming in and they're bringing their business to the county, and they're trying to figure out whether they're going to go forward or not because they're going to need a certain height, let's say it's 45 feet. And if they can't get that height, they might not even want to put in for the rezoning, much less the CUP.
That's correct.
Now, I've looked at the table and I agree with a heck of a lot of what Larry has said. But I've looked at the table for other localities, even the rural neighbors, and folks, 45 feet is under what most of the other localities have. So I don't feel like that we're in any way out of line, and in fact, we're still under most of the localities. So I'm pretty comfortable with the 45 feet, realizing that it's only 10 feet more, but if they want to go any higher than that, they're going to have to get a conditional use permit. I understand that. So I don't think we're taking this quantum leap and, you know, ruining the rural character of the county. I'm not there with that argument, although again, Larry, I like a lot of your statements about trying to figure out whether we're going to be a rural county or a something else, a more developed county. And I think all of us have said, we don't want, you know, the development that turns us into something other than a rural char, a rural county. We want to remain a rural county and keep the rural character. So I don't think this is what we're saying at all. And if you look at where we've, you know, designated for industrial property, there's a reason that we put the designation where we put it. We put it there because we knew it had potential to develop in that vein. So if we don't want to do that, then we need to start changing some designations. For example, if we don't want it down where Mr. Kunkka lives, we ought to just go ahead and change the future land use map.
Exactly.
Let's do that, as opposed to having this continuous conversation about whether or not we're going to put something down there or not and what it's going to look like. Because this has been an ongoing discussion going back to our days, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Melton, on the Planning Commission. So the problem, the bigger issue you have right now before you is, do you want to have industrial development down at that end of the county? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Question, oh, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, we get accused of not being very business-friendly and confusing from the developmental community. And adding more steps on the things, it just, to me, just is counterintuitive to trying to be business-friendly and encourage. I do agree with, as Mr. Williams said, that, the comments that Mr. Norvig has stated. But again, I support the 45 feet, could not find any reasons on the reduction from 45 to 35, any valid reasons. And again, we have Planning Commission that has worked very hard and they were fine with the 45 feet, and I'm supportive of that. So I'm not in support of the motion that's been made by Mr. Norvig.
Final comment? Could you repeat? Oops. You have a comment?
Real quick.
Yeah.
This is going to sound kind of crass, but I don't really care how other localities do it. It's good to learn from other localities, but, you know, they, that's their home, Powhatan's our home. And if they want to have skyscrapers sprouting up, or if they want to have 75-foot buildings in their industrial zones, that's up to them. I'm looking, the highest, you know, Henrico County, 200 feet, Chesterfield County, 150 I don't want to be Chesterfield County. I don't want to be Henrico County. None of my constituents that I talk to want to be either one of those counties. So how do you stay Powhatan? How do you stay what people move here for and what people who have lived here a long time that don't want to see the rural aspect go away? How do you keep that? And the answer is not invite in a bunch more businesses that are tall. That's not the answer to me. We need to invite in businesses that are Powhatan-friendly. And I think 35 feet with a CUP is a decent balance. And Brett, thanks for your suggestion. I, I thought that through, but about having the Planning Commission take a look at it and there'd be a public hearing, et cetera. There's a lot of attractive things there, that's a good idea. But I'm also aware that they voted 5.0 on the Planning Commission to raise the limit here to 45 feet, so I'd like to leave this at the Board of Supervisor level. But thanks for your input, that was pretty good. Anyway, that's my comments.
Last call? Mr. Clerk, would you pause?
You don't, you don't need a roll call.
You don't?
No, because this is not the final ordinance you're voting on. This is just whether to...
This is the first motion. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
To reduce.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Okay, failed. So it's no need to go to the second part.
Well, now you still need a motion to approve the second...
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve 0218-25 to change the ordinance to 45 feet. As recommended from staff and Planning Commission.
23.
It's 23, dash 23.
I apologize, you're right. 23, as recommended by staff and the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, you got to do a roll call on that, don't you?
Yeah, now I need a roll call. On the motion to approve item 0-218-23, what is your vote, Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Strong no.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
No. Moving on to item 11C, 0218-24.
Case number 18-06-AZ is a request by Powhatan County to modify use standards and definitions listed in the zoning ordinance associated with accessory dwellings, which include accessory apartments and accessory dwelling units detached. Currently, accessory dwelling units must be occupied by the property owner, a member of the owner's family, or a domestic servant employed on the premises. This proposed amendment would require that the owner live on the property, but would remove restrictions stating that the accessory dwelling may only be occupied by a family member or domestic servant. It will also provide clarification regarding the use of manufactured homes as accessory dwellings. This amendment also addresses some conflicting language within the rural residential zoning district. In that zoning district, it says that accessory apartments, or accessory apartments are listed as both permitted and conditional uses. This amendment will remove accessory apartment as a conditional use so that it would only be listed as a permitted use in that RR zoning district. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 7, 2018, and recommended approval of this request with a vote of five to zero.
Questions of staff, comments? I'll open the public hearing on this particular item. If you wish to speak to it, please come forward, identify yourself.
May I?
Yes, sir.
Don Silbervauer, 1426 Donovan Mill Lane, Power 10. I would urge you to approve this, and I'll tell you why. Again, we hear often about affordable housing. This is an opportunity for affordable housing. It's an opportunity for the people that would be owning the property to earn a little bit extra money. And it would relieve congestion with possible high-density along Route 60 and other high-density travel roads by putting additional housing in areas that are outside the mainstream. So I think it's a win for the direction that I think the county would like to go, and I think it's a positive for the county and for homeowners. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address this issue? Seeing no one, I close the public hearing on 0218-24. What's the wish of the board?
I have a question, staff.
Go.
Get to the mic. So Andrew, just one, I noticed that we referenced manufactured home as not being allowed. Can you share with me the thought process behind not allowing manufactured homes?
The current ordinance doesn't specify whether or not an accessory dwelling may be a manufactured home or not. And in the Planning Commission level, we had, there was some split discussion. Some members didn't see a problem with allowing manufactured homes as accessory dwellings, and others did have a problem with it. I think, well, one argument, I guess, at the staff level that we had was a manufactured home inherently does not look like a stick-built home, so it doesn't look like it's accessory to a home. It looks like there's two houses on the property.
But wouldn't that be the homeowner's decision if he wanted to have a manufactured home there sitting beside his $400,000 home? And he put his parents in it for a period of time and then he decides to change it to? I mean, it's his investment, it's his property. I, you know, I know of a manufactured home that Mr. Miss Elton lived in that was as nice as any home in this county, and it was a manufactured home. Little do they know when they purchased it, but they discovered it when they went to get financing. And so I think manufactured homes can be done. And I'm not, you know, I'm not going to die on the sword on that one, but I just wondered why we felt that manufactured homes couldn't, couldn't fit in in a situation where you've got a 10-acre parcel and somebody wants to put a home on it and it's a, I mean, you can put nice manufactured homes in too. You know, I guess that to me is a private property right decision from a, for a landowner.
And one comment I will make on that as well is, the use standards would apply to any zoning district, so if we wanted to apply it to a specific situation or zoning district, like it may be appropriate in A-10, but it might not be appropriate within the R-2 zoning district or something like that. So if we wanted to specify something like that, that should be in that particular section.
Mr. Chairman? Andrew, stay right there for you. Mr. Williams?
Good point, thank you, Andrew. It's a good point, thank you.
I'd like to follow up with what Mr. Melton was asking about. When we say a manufactured home, is that the same or different from a trailer?
Well, I guess we need to go to 83-521 to get that definition. Is that correct?
It's, it's the same thing. I can read the definition for you if that's helpful, but they're the same thing.
Because Billy's right. I mean, they're making homes now that they come and actually assemble that you wouldn't know after they were put together that it was a manufactured home. There's one over in Oldwood Creek.
Is that a modular home?
Is that the same thing? That's the question, Angie. I don't know.
There's a distinction between what some call a mobile home, usually that is referred to as a manufactured home, versus a modular home, which is also manufactured in controlled conditions in a factory and is, but then assembled on site. So you want to make sure you get those distinctions clear.
I think that's where Billy was getting at, you know.
I think Tom, look on the state code and you help us a little bit.
Well, I'm looking at our definition. Manufactured home means a structure subject to federal regulation, so it's trailers. Yep.
Other comments or questions of staff?
So then we would allow, just clarity, we would allow a modular home and a...
The factory-built homes that Mr. Voorhees is referencing that are assembled on site wouldn't fall into this manufactured home definition because the first thing, it says subject to federal regulation, which had, you know, the trailers have to have this hut.
So theoretically, you could have a yurt.
I have what?
A yurt. No trailers, but we can have yurts.
But I'm trying to understand, so are we saying then that you could have a trailer or could not? You could not.
The way it's written, you can.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear on that. So Billy, are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that. I just, I want to make sure that, you know, because there are modular, if you want to call them, those homes that are very well-done today.
But, and staff, are you okay with it? Because, you know, going to your point, Andrew, you don't want to bring this into a zoning district, into a neighborhood, you know, let's put aside A-10 where it may not be as impactful. But if you're bringing something in and it was going to allow, for example, a trailer to come in, in a residential neighborhood, you probably wouldn't want that as your accessory building.
And another issue that we explored, perhaps incorporating into this ordinance, if you did want to allow manufactured homes as accessory dwelling units, are some use standards to say, you know, it had to have a porch, or it had to have shutters, or it had to have architectural features that make it look more compatible with the home that's on site. Instead of just saying it can be a manufactured home, saying that it can be a manufactured home if certain conditions are met.
So you're intentionally trying to make it fit in with these additional requirements wherever it goes? You're saying if you use a manufactured home, you're going to have to do these other things?
If you chose to take that approach, we explored that. It's not in the draft ordinance, but it is something we explored pursuing.
So are we ready to deal with this tonight, or do we need staff to go back and do, and deal with what we're putting on the table here?
I would prefer not to. I would prefer not to kick anything down the road. We got a lot of stuff ahead of us, so.
Are you in a deal?
Where would the board, preference the board?
Andrew, to the things that you were considering, that you looked at, do you consider them important in terms of being able to move forward with allowing?
In my professional opinion, I would say yes, because we wanna make sure that these manufactured homes blend with the surrounding community. And I think it establishes a barrier of entry. It's not like any old person that wants to make some extra income and just pull a trailer onto their property. It makes some, requires a certain investment and appearance that, again, helps it blend with the surrounding community.
Well, I'm interested in seeing that, because I think that would be important.
So Mr. Williams, are you okay then allowing the language to allow for manufacturing homes? Would that allow staff to...
Yes, that's exactly.
Have additional conditions that would say manufactured home has to be on a solid foundation or whatever it turns out to be? I don't, I don't know.
So let me recommend that we ask, we don't, we don't vote on this at all tonight. That we ask staff to go and do the filling in that we've been talking about for the last fifteen minutes and bring it back to us with these clarifications. Otherwise, we're buying a pig in a pokey, and we have to come back later and change it.
That's fine.
So do I hear a motion at all?
I'll make a motion.
No, don't make a motion.
I'm gonna just make a motion, we defer it. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Defer it with direction to staff.
With direction for staff to bring it back, to allow manufactured homes with language that puts conditions on the manufactured home and how it would fit into each of the zoning districts. And let's defer that for, till our next board meeting, which is about thirty days, you know. So I'm...
Mr. Vaughn, making you deliver in thirty days?
Yes, sir.
No, he's already done it. He's already looked at it.
Do I hear a second to this motion?
Second.
All those in, do we have, this is just a straight vote, right? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
So be it. We're moving back to, tell you what we're gonna do. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, a five-minute recess, and a five-minute recess only. I reconvene the meeting tonight. We're on item nine A, an update from the county administrator on bonded projects. Mr. Voorhees?
We didn't do eight B or C.
All right, I'll get to them.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not, not a lot to report that's not in your packet. If you have certainly questions, we'd be happy to answer those. This is a meeting where, you know, we can say that the water tank is fully functioning and online, and the middle school is about to open, the staff's in it and occupied, and that's very exciting. CAD's up and running. We are continuing to work with the contractor on some, some claims addressing a little bit of delay in opening the courthouse facility, but that still is projected to be opened by the end of September. So if there are other questions, we're certainly happy to answer them.
Questions to the county administrator on their projects, on their bond projects?
So, Mr. Voorhees, it really did relate to the bond, one of the bond projects is not in the... Did we decide that we were gonna paint the water tower? Or not paint the water tower? I had a citizen said it looked like a big golf ball, and wonder what was gonna happen?
We, we have plans to paint Titleist One on them.
Yeah, off a big driver, but it's okay.
We have not reached a final, final decision on that matter. We got an original proposal from the manufacturer to paint. We had sort of looked at some general options, and we also looked at what the logo option looked like. The, the cost there, we thought, was a little out of line with what we might be able to get. So we just sort of shelved it until a future time and until maybe the logo issue was resolved. That issue may now be resolved by board action, but we would probably look to a different contractor to maybe give us a better price, one of the maintenance contractors that we deal with. So we're, we're prepared, we're still looking at it.
Okay, thank you, I just was curious.
Other questions, comments? Moving on to nine B, strategic priority scorecard. Mr. Voorhees?
And this is updated. We still have some mapping work that we're trying to do on the housing piece. We think we can be more informative and use that as a decision-making tool for the board to start thinking about some of our housing-related matters, but hadn't quite gotten that where we want it to be. Otherwise, probably next month will be the first month where we really get the, the public safety response data in there. So we continue to make progress on this. And next month, we'll be starting our process to, to move performance measurement into all our departments. We'll be having our, our new budget and performance staff member joining us at the beginning of September, and then she will help to be a resource with all departments to break their budgets into programs and, and put these kinds of measures around each one of them.
Mr. Chairman, I have just one question. I guess it was more, more for Brett. Brett, on page eighty-six, make sure I got the right page here. I just locked, I just jumped around on that, I apologize. I'll go back and find it. No, I won't find the page, just jump this computer. It, it referenced jobs in quarter one, a down three hundred in some jobs. Was that the prison-related and Beaumont-related reduction in jobs?
I believe so. We can check with VEC to verify, but I believe that's what it would be.
I just was curious, we had, we've seen some modest growth in other quarters, but I see some reduction there. And I'm just curious, is, if that's the prison in Beaumont?
Yeah, we can, we'll verify.
Okay, thank you.
Follow up with you.
Follow up on that question, Mr. Voorhees. Does that number drop affect us in any way in any of the ways that we are measured by bond council or otherwise? Because if it is, if it does ding us because we're losing employment, we need a great big footprint, a footnote, sorry, that tells why that's the case. That was not a local decision, that was a state decision. But your answer is no, you think not?
Typically, something like that is gonna fluctuate along. They'd be more interested in kind of overall budget versus expenditure, decision-making, and overall economy. I, you know, a quarter-over-quarter fluctuation is, is not something that's gonna trigger rating agency action. But certainly, it's something we wanna, wanna monitor. I think particularly if it's in, in the public sector employment, it's, it's less of a concern with a state agency closing. Those revenues, you know, don't inure to us directly, because that's, it's tax exempt property, and those employees live scattered around the region as opposed to having a situation where we had a major manufacturer close.
Any other questions on this issue?
Just one comment there. I think it's my understanding that they're taking pretty darn good care of the place in that maybe there, as we all have been updated a little bit, that maybe the closing of it is not as final as we thought it was.
That's what it seems like.
The new governor has indicated his desire to look real hard at reopening Beaumont. They ran into some financial problems with the Suffolk facility and the addition, additional to Von Air. So he's looking at reopening it at some time in the future, but that is all purely speculation at this point.
Yep.
Any other questions about strategic priority?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Page ninety-six. The measure is quality of life data from citizen satisfaction survey. It says methodology affirmed is contracted by Powhatan County every two years to perform a citizen survey to benchmark resident perspectives, et cetera. Did we commit to doing a survey every two years?
No, sir.
That has not been decided. That's, that was a, a thought. We could certainly soften that language.
Well, I think the recommendation from, from the consultant was, you know, to get your benchmark used two years. We have not decided.
And I think what I said during the presentation, every two or three...
Pardon?
Who's the consultant, Bill?
The Miller, the group who did it, that were one of their recommendations.
Oh, NCS, you know, well, of course, they go, I mean...
They want you to spend more money, David. I got it, I'm with you. I'm with you, but...
Well, what part of the, part of the purpose, obviously, is the scorecard, to show movement. And that is one tool to show movement, whether it's positive or negative. I know you know, sorry. Any other questions about nine B, strategic priority scorecard? Moving on to the second vote, nine C on zero two eighteen dash twenty-one. This is necessary because of my absence for this vote, I think. So staff, please help us, bring us up to speed.
All right. Case number eighteen dash oh three dash REZC is a request by Shiftlet Construction Services to amend the proffer statement for two lots within the Mill Station subdivision, Tax Map thirty-eight F dash one dash thirty-eight, and Tax Map thirty-eight F dash one dash fifty-two. The applicant is requesting to reduce the cash proffer associated with those two lots from seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars, adjusted by increases in the Consumer Price Index, to one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, adjusted by increases in the Consumer Price Index. A public hearing on this case was held on July thirtieth. Due to a tie vote, no action was taken, so this case is coming back for reconsideration tonight.
Questions of staff? No public comment period, no public hearing necessary here?
I'll make a motion. Move we approve ordinance zero two eighteen twenty-one, reduction of proffers for Shiftlet Construction Services Incorporated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Comments, questions?
Mr. Latney, if, if we choose to stop reducing our proffers, do we set ourselves at risk for the one, for the ones that we refuse to adjust the proffers based on the fact that we've reduced them from multiple others that came before?
No, not necessarily. We may have had a window where we felt like it was appropriate during the, the current building cycle to do so, but that doesn't obligate us to do so in the future. The board may have had its reasons for approving them and may have its reasons for changing its mind on approving them going forward.
Well, the reasons that we gave for approving the reductions over time were exactly what you suggest, because we felt that we could help the business trades, as Mr. Melton regularly reminds us, fifty-seven are sole percentage of our employee, of our employable folks are in the building trades. And it was an attempt on our part during bad times to help people get back to work. So I'm wondering whether it is time for us to reconsider the adjustments down. I'm open to discussion around this issue before we call the vote.
Mr. Tucker, while I think that was part of the, the equation, I think we had done a, an analysis of our current CIP that calculated them to, by staff, run through the county attorney to eighteen eighty based upon our CIP. It wasn't just, you know, while it was putting for, building industry back to work, it was tied to an abstract number of eight, of the CIP. Do I think we need to revisit that? Absolutely, and I think we've, we've talked about that. But that was the amount that was calculated at our CIP at that time, so.
Well, I think the issue is that the majority of the board has been voting to grant a reduction in the proffer that was part of the conditional zoning that the individuals received at the time of their rezonings. As you know, some of these cases go back to two thousand and six, for example, when the proffer amount was much higher than what it is today. And Bill's right. The proffer that's calculated today, the eighteen hundred, was calculated against the capital projects back, what was it, a year, two years ago, when we did it? And we were drawing that bright line connection to the projects that were in the CIP where we knew that they were gonna be impacted directly by new development coming in in the county. So the issue is, is do you want to give back the difference between the proffer that was offered as part of the conditional rezoning in a previous year, years, to bring it down to the amount of the current proffer of eighteen hundred? That's the issue.
And, and Mr. Chairman, you are a hundred percent correct. One of the other issues, things that I thought about was intuitively, if you had lots sitting out there with seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollar proffers on them, and you, you know, and other localities had done this, reduced it down to the current amount, would you then have been forcing developers to say, well, heck with that, I'll just, won't build on any of those lots? We had neighborhoods at that time that had been built on for years that you couldn't drive school buses down because it didn't meet the VDOT requirements. So would they have just gone on and rezoned a bunch of land and attached eighteen hundred and eighty dollar proffers on them? The seventy-two thirty-six was tied to a proffer tied, hopefully, it was done and calculated off a CIP that was done if the, if the house had been built during that cycle. So, you know, we can debate all day long, and I know we've had much dialogue from the planning commission and citizens in, in the county. I'm still comfortable with the eighteen eighty. I am on record as saying we need to recalculate this and do our work, not just internally. We also need to do our work on a twenty-five-year old CIP that we've, we've had a dialogue on. So I'm, I'm okay with this, as I made a motion.
We should be updating the proffer amount every year with the approval of the CIP. That's the way we did it for a hundred years until, you know, in recent years. But we, we need to do that, and I'm in full accord with you, Bill, that we need to be looking at that twenty-five-year CIP and a new proffer model that accompanies that so that we can be able to address the full cost of new development coming into this county and get a proffer that helps mitigate that new development coming into the county such that the burden isn't placed on the residents for the cost of community services that we're, you know, bearing now across the county.
One last comment, Mr. Chairman. I think the eighteen eighty, if we remember what was going on at that time, legislation had been passed and blah, you know, all the things were going on. We were asking a county attorney, this, that. So I think it was important that we were able to validate our eighteen eighty back to say, we calculated it based upon the CIP, these were the costs, and then you, you know, use the value of the home, subtract, and you came up. So it was important, I think, at that time, that we had something that if we were challenged, that was, that was defensible at that moment. So that, that, you know, where we were when we, along with putting people to work and all the other things, so.
So Charlotte, when, when you headed up the team that came up with the new proffer eighteen eighty, was it, was it your work? And can you give us a thumbnail sketch of how you did that?
We looked at the projects that were in the CIP, and you had to determine if, by what the projects were doing, was it adding capacity based on your population? So some of the projects, we deemed that a percentage, maybe we couldn't do a hundred percent of the addition or the hundred percent of the construction being due to new capacity. So that's...
I'm sorry, define capacity here.
Additional students or additional...
Okay.
If I may, Mr.?
Burden on the infrastructure or...
David, let her finish, and then you can weigh in.
And, and I know, I believe, trying to remember, I think it was two or three years ago, I, we went to, well, we did, we went to Chesterfield and looked at how they did theirs and kind of tried to use some of the model they had, but of course, they have lots of inventory of things. And I know I, Mr. Latney reviewed some of what we were looking at. It was a long time ago, so it's hard to remember. Not a long time ago, but a couple of years ago. Just seeking advice to make sure with the proffer standards I was calculating things, or interpreting things correctly.
David?
Charlotte's right, because when we looked at the issue, for example, of the new middle school, it wasn't a capacity issue, it was an age issue.
Correct.
And I think the, the topic centered around that. This wasn't the result of new, of new residents coming into county. It was a result that we had a school that was built back when, during the energy crisis that we had in this camp, in this country, and it simply, you know, needed to be replaced. So those are the issues, and Charlotte's exactly right. It was related... So those are the issues, and Charlotte's exactly right, it was related to capacity. It wasn't that we had to go back and fix things.
And Mr. Chairman, if I remember correctly, I don't think the board was uncomfortable with the eighteen eighty. I think it was a five-oh vote, that the eighteen eighty was, was the calculated amount we were comfortable with. I think where we've differed was, do you allow a reduction? That's the difference.
For the people that already rezoned and offered a proffer.
Exactly.
Bill, you're right. That's the, that's the issue we've been voting on.
The issue was, the eighteen eighty was an amount that we all were comfortable with in a five-oh vote, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
The issue is, do you allow the reduction?
For people that came through earlier when it was a higher amount.
And part of those CIPs, if you remember correctly, had a hundred thousand, a hundred million dollar governmental building and all those things in those calculations. So, you know, some people ask me, well, why were they that, that high? Well, you know, I didn't, I wasn't involved in the calculation process then, but I can surmise that there was a larger CIP, projects that were no longer being calculated.
But, you know, we can go back and revisit all of that, but the, the issue I think Carson has probably bring forward tonight is, is it appropriate? You can debate whether it was for the other cases or not, but tonight, today, is it appropriate to continue to grant the reductions in the proffers to the current eighteen eighty amount? That's the question, I believe Mr. Tucker has brought forward.
Tom, can you, can you add anything to this?
Well, a couple of things, just to clarify. The current eighteen eighty amount doesn't exist.
It what?
It doesn't exist. There is no current amount, because we cannot accept cash proffers, basically. So there is no current amount. If somebody comes in for a new rezoning, there is not going to be any cash proffers. And so, you know, we're talking about a number that's really actually not relevant to, to any future development.
But this, but this is not about the future, this is past. Well, he's still.
What, what, we accepted proffers, let's just, in this case, we accepted a proffer for seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Right.
A few years ago, the board decided to revisit, and we had a recommended proffer amount, which I think was, I can't remember, very large. The board decided to revisit the proffer, what, what would be our suggested, we can't demand, probably, we couldn't even back under the old law, demand proffers, but we, the board decided we would reduce our suggested proffer going forward to eighteen eighty. Then the General Assembly changed the law on proffers and made it practically impossible to collect cash proffers.
So what's the point of this motion?
Well, because at some point in the past, you said, going forward, we're going to request eighteen eighty on proffers while that was still legal. And then the decision was made by this board to reduce all the folks that had made proffers of previous amounts in previous years. And I, I won't speak to or can't speak to the motivation as to why that was done.
So are the people who we, that you granted it to, in this particular case, seventy-two thirty-six, are they obligated to seventy-two thirty-six, or are you telling us it doesn't matter because they're illegal anyway?
No, 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 those are perfectly legal, and they're obligated. And, and basically, anyone you reduce to eighteen eighty, it's just, it's just a gift. They can't require it, they can't sue us for it, they can't beat us in court and get it reduced. So the reductions from, from seventy-two thirty-four to eighteen eighty are strictly voluntary actions by this board for whatever motivations to reduce it. What I'm saying is going forward, we, we talk about the eighteen eighty like it's a current number.
Right.
But it's not a current number, because we do not recommend, request, suggest, or even discuss cash proffers with any developers.
Now, Tom, what I've been told is, you know, the open chain law that got passed that severely limited proffers, it was related to, we can't ask and we can't accept an unreasonable proffer.
Correct.
Now, what Gushland has been able to do, along with the city of Suffolk, is that them been able to address the code of Virginia as it is today, and then they're, they have been able to come up with a model that shows the development community, based on the type of development that you are proposing, and which part, or which third of the county, they can show you with the proffer calculation, with the spreadsheets that they have set up, what the impact of that development is going to be projected. How are they able to do this?
Well, I'll answer that first by telling you what the law says. The law says any cash proffer that we accept now, and again, this is only residential. Commercial, we can take cash proffers all day long. This is only residential. It's, the law says, we have, it's, it's an improper proffer, and we can't even discuss it unless it is directly attributable to the development. The consensus, at local government attorney's conferences that I've attended, the consensus is directly attributable is very difficult to establish. I remember the presentation from Gushland. I have not seen Suffolk's. I would tell you, I would prefer to let them be the first ones to litigate that. Because here's, here's the downside. The downside is if we, if we accept the proffer improperly, we got to pay all the legal fees if we lose. And so, I mean, right now, in an up economy, nobody bothers challenging any of that. The, the danger for Gushland or Suffolk, you know, this hasn't been tested in court, and, and it's going to be on a down economy or on a development that isn't making money, then we'll find out whether these elaborate calculations that they paid all this money for are in fact defensible in court, because the test is directly attributable.
Let's call the vote on this.
I made a motion, we had a second.
On the, the matter of case zero dash two eighteen, or item zero dash two eighteen dash twenty-one, that's case number eighteen dash oh three dash R E Z C. What is your vote, Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Nordvig?
No.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Melton?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes. Moving on to item nine D, the second vote on zero two eighteen dash twenty-two. This is about flag lots. I'd like to suggest, ladies and gentlemen, that we defer this to thirty days, because I know the swing vote is me unless one of you has changed your vote, and I'm not comfortable yet with doing this. I've had multiple telephone calls in the last several days that have made me start thinking all over again about my position on not flag lots, but on flag lots as are mentioned in this particular case. So I'd like to suggest that we defer this to our next meeting. That is the motion.
Mr. Chairman, let me double check, but I think if there's no vote tonight, it's defeated. The way this works, I believe, in our bylaws, and I'm looking right now, but I believe the way our bylaws are written.
You are correct.
That if there's a tie vote, it's deferred to the next meeting. If it's still a tie or an unsuccessful vote, then it's defeated.
You are correct.
Say it again, sorry.
No vote tonight means this is defeated. Doesn't mean it can't be brought back, but that would not be this motion. Let me double check that, if you will give me sixty seconds.
Mr. Chairman, that's not a big deal. They can always write a new ordinance. I mean, you don't want to be voting on something that you're unsure of.
I agree.
Yeah, it says, it says here, in any case where there should be a tie vote of the board, the question should be passed by till the next regular meeting, when it shall again be, be voted upon by all the members. So deferring is not allowed in our, in our bylaws. In a case where there is a tie vote after completing this procedure, the tie vote will defeat the motion. So our bylaws say, yes, it's carried forward to the next meeting, but I don't think the way these are written, a deferral can be made.
So if I, so if I abstained, it's defeated?
It's defeated.
And then staff would have to bring it back again?
Staff would have to bring it back, and we'd have to re-advertise it.
All right, there's a motion on the floor.
Can we have some dialogue first, before we make them? I came prepared as, as I was last month to support this. I think it's important, we have a body that does a lot of hard work for us, contrary to what some people think. I think they do a hell of a job, and that's our planning commission. Planning commission recommended that we do not do away with flag lots. We did away with flag lots for developers. We did not, and, and that night on the November sixteenth, I spoke and I said, I am, I asked a question, after a much long dialogue on all other things, I asked a question on flag lots. And I think Mr. Williams said something like, I thought we put this to rest, and I said, well, I, I have a concern with parent tracts, because you require, you know, two hundred plus feet of road frontage, and I'm, I'm okay doing away with it for a development, tool for developer, but I am not okay with doing it for parent tracts and single cuts. And at that point, several people said, yeah, you, you know, I'm not going to dial and sort and that, whatever. So we did not, didn't get updated into ordinance, and that's why it's back before us tonight. I'm still consistently okay with doing away with the flag lots for a developmental tool for a developer, but I am not in support of hurting a landowner who's had land in their general, family for, for many, many years, and it's the only land bank they have, is their piece of property, and then we're going to require, you know, that, not allow them a single cut on it. I've been consistent with that. Our planning commission recommended that it continue to be a developmental tool, and I, I have a tremendous amount of respect for Andrew and staff, but I do not see this as a huge development tool in the rural areas. How many parent tracts are really left out there? And so therefore, I am still in support of this. I think it's, you know, Mr. Tucker, I can understand you're kind of becoming uncomfortable, but I, I'd like to see us try to put this to rest. We have our, we have things ahead of us. We have the conference of plan, we have some dialogue on RC, we have things ahead of us that, that I think we just, at times, need to put some things to rest and move on, and I'm not trying to force your hand one way or the other. I know, understand your uncomfortableness in wanting to do it, but I, I would prefer that we try to go and put something to rest.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on a minute.
Okay.
Are we going to repeat everything that was done in the last meeting here tonight?
No, I'm just asking Mr. Melton, we've got somebody here who says he's uncomfortable voting, and you're trying to press him to vote. I think that's inappropriate. I think, I think we should let this die.
And I said I wasn't trying to force his vote, but what I wanted him to understand was a history behind it all, Mr. Nordvig, which you, I think you were one of them that voted for it last time, if we go back and pull the minutes.
Let's, let's call the vote, because it'll fix it in a second.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think anybody actually put a motion on the floor.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Why should that matter? We just vote.
So I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance second vote on zero two eighteen twenty-two, as recommended, that we allow for flag lots on parent tracts.
Second, please.
I'll second that.
Would you poll us?
Discussion on the motion?
Sure.
I know you're trying to get through this, Mr. Tucker, I apologize, but here's one comment I want to make. I don't mind people in the rural areas, you know, referring to their land as their 401. If you want to sell your land, sell it. There's nothing that prohibits people from doing that. Now, if you want to do a single cut, do a single cut. I'm fine with that. But when it comes to saying you have a development right, you have a use for your property, code of Virginia doesn't guarantee you a development right. So I want to make that distinction, because that's important. You know, nobody is denying you the ability to use your property as your 401. Again, if you want to sell all part of your property, if you want to sell your property, you can do that. But I'm agreeing with staff, wholeheartedly, and I go through the five points, or excuse me, the four points that they brought forward, that I agree with. And I won't go through them tonight, Mr. Chairman. I'll let you, I'll let you get through with your business, so thank you.
Other comments?
Real quick.
Sure.
I don't want anybody to leave here with the impression from comments that I'm in favor of flag lots. I am not. I am in favor of flag lots in two situations. If you have a family member and you want to give an heirloom piece of your land to that family member, great. So that does not prevent you from doing a flag lot to give to your children or your grandchildren a slice of your land. Also, at the end of a cul-de-sac, it makes perfect sense to have a flag lot. But when you start toying with flag lots up and down county roads, what you do is you, you change the view shed, which again, we're trying to keep Palatane rural friendly, and these are in areas that are particularly rural. There's no guarantee that that second house won't be seen from the road, so theoretically, you could have houses on both sides of the road, and suddenly you have doubled the number of houses on both sides of the road, and that changes the character of this county. You also have mailboxes close together, you have FedEx trucks delivering close together, you have school bus stops more on that road, and I'm not in favor of road stripping. There are places that we've designated for growth, and there are residential areas that we have designated. These areas, we have said, as a board, we want to keep rural. The people are very clear on what they want Palatane to be like. So we have included flag lots in those situations that make sense, and we have tamponed down development in the areas that we want to keep rural. That just makes perfect sense. It goes along with our comp plan, it goes along with what the staff says. So I don't want anybody leaving here with the impression that may be mishearing that I'm in favor of flag lots. I'm not.
Thank you, Mr. Nordvig.
Thank you.
Just one quick comment. I rode with VDOT recently, and we rode Route thirteen, and there's a development on that road that did exactly what the ordinance said, it's ten acre lots. You have a ten acre lot and a driveway, two hundred and fifteen feet, you have another ten acre lot and a driveway, two hundred and fifteen feet, you have another ten acre lot and a driveway, school bus stops there, it stops there, it stops there, it stops there, it stops there, and it stops there. I said to VDOT, what are your thoughts on that? And Kevin's comments were, we would prefer the driveways be side by side, so the bus stops maybe two times versus six times. So, you know, I, I understand, you know, rural character, I see it as an opportunity for rural character. I, I am confused, so would we allow, Andrew, I have a question, would we allow a family member to have a flag lot in a ordinance? Okay, so a family member could have, could have, could have cut a flag lot off?
Yes.
And they would require, how many feet of road frontage? Twenty or thirty?
Yeah, depending on the number of lots, is it twenty and thirty, Ed? Is that correct?
Twenty or forty.
Twenty or forty, depending on the number of lots.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Nordvig.
Is that it? Clerk of the Board, would you poll us, please?
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Nordvig?
No.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Melton?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Abstain, move to item nine C, zero two eighteen dash zero six.
Case number eighteen dash oh one dash AZ is a request by Palatane County to amend the list of permitted and conditional uses within the residential commercial, RC, general commercial, C, office, O, courthouse square center, CHSC, village center, VC, and commerce center, CC zoning districts. If approved, this request will revise the types of uses permitted by right or with a conditional use permit within commercial and mixed-use transition-based districts. The planning commission held a public hearing on January sixteenth, twenty eighteen, and recommended approval of this request with a vote of four to one. The Board of Supervisors held a public hearing on April twenty-third, twenty eighteen, and voted to defer this request and continue the public hearing to May twenty-first, twenty eighteen. At the meeting on May twenty-first, twenty eighteen, the public hearing was deferred to tonight's meeting. Again, the planning commission reviewed this request and recommended approval with a four, a vote of four to one. The Department of Community Development recommends approval of this request. One issue that you all may want to consider as you discuss this request is that there are some site plan applications submitted that may be impacted by these changes, so you may consider grandfathering applications that have already been submitted and are working their way through the process.
Questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Andrew, why are we here? And I, I'm not mean to be, I'm not being a wise guy, what I'm doing is giving you the opportunity that staff had, I remember, at one of our meetings previous that you listed, where you and Brett, and I think Karen Carmack even spoke, about the efficacy of going forward with doing something with this longstanding problem that we have with residential commercial. For, for our benefit, could you and Brett just briefly go through the points to give us, you know, to get us focused again about why we're here and why we're discussing this recommendation from the planning com- recommendation from the Planning Commission?
The short answer is there's been concern about commercial development along Route sixty and having strip-style development on one of our major thoroughfares from Route five twenty-two to the county line. In the nineteen eighties, the RC district was established along Route sixty, and it extends five hundred feet from that roadway. And as you can see, commercial development has occurred within that zoning district in some believe in a haphazard way. So the Planning Commission did a lot of work to look at the uses permitted in RC and some of those other transition-based districts to see what uses may be appropriate there, what may not be, and, um, you know, revising that list, list of uses in an attempt to encourage people to rezone to one of our village growth area districts if that's appropriate and aligns with recommendations made in the comprehensive plan. Some of those districts include the Commerce Center, CC zoning district, and the Village Center, VC zoning district. So it's an attempt to move away from that RC district and try to encourage landowners to go through the rezoning process into one of our village growth area districts adopted in twenty fourteen.
And you had mentioned small-scale, un unified development as a problem going forward. I think you also brought forward the, the issue that you wanted people to move out of the transition districts into the current zoning districts. Is that correct as well?
That's, that's correct. Our village growth area districts, the way the ordinance is written, in some instances have greater design and development standards than our transition-based districts. One of those instances has changed with adoption of new architectural standards, but we do want to encourage people to move to that village growth area district that better aligns with recommendations made in the comprehensive plan.
I thought back in June, Billy and I were talking about this today. I thought back in June, we adopted the same development standards, architectural standards as well, back in June after the Planning Commission had passed that for all the districts, didn't we?
Yeah, we adopted the architectural standards for all zoning districts. There are a few other instances where village growth area districts have different standards. For, for example, it doesn't apply to commercial, but multifamily development in village growth areas has different standards than if you had a multifamily project in not transition-based districts.
So it's a different, for multifamily units, it's different in transitional districts than it is in the built, in growth districts?
Yeah. In general, with the architectural standards, that was the biggest difference, but there are a few nuances in the ordinance where there are different standards in transition versus village growth area districts. So we want to encourage people to go to the village.
I thought in RC, we said we wanted to have the same development standards. I thought that's.
We said the same architectural standards.
But not the same development standards?
In some places, for example, in the subdivision ordinance, you have to have street trees in a village growth area district. You don't have to have street trees in a village, a transition-based district. But the architectural was the big appearance issue that we, that we did change.
I, I guess I was, I misunderstood because I thought we had moved to, you know, more, more stringent development standards.
Architectural standards are the same for all zoning districts. There's just a few other places where village growth area districts have different standards.
Okay. But generally speaking, you know, y'all told us also that night that y'all were spending a disproportionate amount of time, staff that is, working on applications in the RC district.
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
That's, that's correct. We have a lot of our site plans come in the RC zoning district.
And if we could somehow, you know, come to grips with this thing that's been out there, that was well-intended when it was put in, but today it doesn't work, in your opinion, looking as, you know, my planning director, Brett is my economic development director. Do you both feel today that we need to do something with this thing called the RC district on Route sixty?
I, I think the RC district does need to be addressed, and of course, that comprehensive plan work group, one of their tasks that Chairman Tucker tasked them with was to look at RC zoning district and how, um, that particular district can be addressed to better reflect current planning practices.
We're, we're working on that. We will address it. But my understanding from your staff report, this was a step forward as part of a more comprehensive, uh, plan that follows to, to basically get rid of the RC district. Is, is that what you're proposing tonight with what's come from the Planning Commission to take these steps to?
If this amendment was approved tonight, I don't think it should be the final step. I think there needs to be more work to be done to ensure that that RC zoning district does reflect the county's vision for Route sixty in other parts of the community and is in line with best practices zoning-wise and otherwise in other parts of the region and the country. So I think if this amendment were approved, it shouldn't be viewed as the end-all, be-all. We do, we should continue our work on determining how we can address the RC's issue.
May I, may I, Mr. Williams, piggyback on your question because you're, you're spot on with my concerns.
Please, please.
So Andrew, if I'm right, to pass this ordinance would not make us backstep or have to fix significant things in the future that this would put in place. I want to believe that there's a line of sight between where we are now through this to where it is that the work team is going to do away with RC, et cetera. Are you telling me that you honestly believe as a professional that if we pass this, we would not end up with things that we had to undo later to make it congruent with whatever the work group comes up with finally?
If the goal is to eliminate the RC district, this step is consistent with that goal. It would just be shrinking the number of uses.
Right.
And then if you wanted to come back and relook at the RC district further, I don't think it would, would hinder that if that's the, the end goal.
Other questions, comments, general?
Just a quick comment. So Mr. Williams is right. We, we rolling our sleeves up and we're working hard to, to address RC. So I'm, I'm just going to read you the uses that are permitted in RC. Telecommunications facilities, library, museum, childcare data center, fire EMS, government administration offices, law enforcement facility, post office, community garden, parking greenway, utility, utility use, minor, animal grooming, professional offices, recreational facilities, public antique store, art gallery, art, crafts, music, blah, 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 dance, photography, martial arts, farmer's market, personal services, dwellings, single-family detached, and massage clinics. That's all that's allowed. What's not allowed? Banks, you know, country clubs, veterinary clinics, grocery store. So there are no businesses allowed in, in my eyes. One of my questions of, in our work group was, while I hear it's a step in the direction, are we just, I would prefer to peel the, peel the Band-Aid off and move on versus doing it in a piecemeal fashion. If we, if we say the issue is haphazard development, strip zoning, et cetera, then this still allows for some of that, you know, are we just putting a Band-Aid on it and, or we just not peeling, just peel it off and move on? If this board says RC is not accomplished with the original intent, which I, I think is a good, fair statement, then, then, then let's peel the, not piecemeal the uses because you've taken all the commercial uses out. You don't allow a bank. You don't allow a grocery store. You don't allow taxidermy shop. You don't allow a gas station. You don't allow, I mean, so why not just peel the Band-Aid? And, and so that's kind, and I said this in the meeting, in our little workshop meeting. Mr. Williams was there and Karen was there, and we kind of all looked at each other and, you know, you know, somebody says, "Well, what is the financial?" I think I said, "Well, let's understand the financial impact we have. Has it altered this?" There's been, then some dialogue done by staff on that. But I just look at, I, I understand the intent from the Planning Commission. It was to address haphazard, strip zoning on sixty. So maybe, maybe this is just, I don't, I don't, I would prefer, in my eyes, to let the public know and, and have dialogue on it and, and move on. And if we're going to take RC away, you take RC away and then move on.
Mr. Williams is chairman of the group. Do you?
No, no, I was, I was replaced. There was a coup. Andrew and Karen Carmack replaced me.
He's lying to you. He's still the guy.
He was one from under the spotlight right there. What, what, I'm, I'm trying to get at what Bill is putting on the table. We seem to be either take steps, which is what staff is suggesting, what the Planning Commission is suggesting, what this ordinance is suggesting, in the direction that we believe we're going, or at the bill's place, don't do anything until the work group comes forward with a comprehensive proposal. That's what it's coming down to. And Andrew, if I got that right?
I, I think that's an accurate summary of the different approaches.
So if we voted on this tonight and we voted yea, we will be taking a step in the direction that the work group is also on a voyage toward. Bill says he's not sure. David, where are you? We got, we got to break this deadlock because we've been doing this since May.
Here's where I'm at, and I've said this publicly before. You have people that are now paying taxes for RC zoning on properties that may not ever even develop. Now, the question is for a lot of the landowners, do you want to continue to pay the higher taxes, or would you prefer to be downzoned and then at the appropriate time be able to rezone to their appropriate zoning district in the future, you know, future land use plan? Let's say it's Commerce Center, and be given credit for the number of acres that you had in RC, or we could even consider waiving the rezoning fee. That's fair. Because again, you've had properties out there. We've had landowners say, "You know, I've had my property for twenty-five years and it just hadn't developed." Well, why do you want to keep paying those higher taxes on properties until they are ready to be developed? And then you will have the ability to rezone to one of the current zoning districts and not have to worry about paying the rezoning fee, the application fee, or that part that with the number of acres that you've got currently in RC. Now, that proposal can be nuanced several different ways. If you're already went forward with your development on your RC zoning, you're good. Now, the question would be then, do you want to go ahead and the county change the zoning for whatever again is in the future land use map for that particular place where they've already developed with RC? Or do you just leave it RC and then you still have the continuation of the RC zoning with, you know, it's still on the books, so to speak? And you have, you know, the separate ordinances accompanying it. So those are the types of issues that we have before. What I'm interested in getting, and Billy did say what he said. Billy said, "If you're going to do it, just pull the, you know, Band-Aid off in one pool, you know, instead of dying a thousand cuts." And I've said this up on stage also. Inform the public on where we're going with this. Work out the details. I met with my planning director, Mr. Pompey, and with the, uh, Commission of Revenue because John Watkins had suggested, and I thought it was a good suggestion, to get those guys together and to be able to come up with a solution. In our meeting last Friday, we pretty much agreed that if we're going to do this in some form of, you know, downzoning the RC, we need to do it prior to the people going out in the field in February for the reassessments. So it's probably incumbent on us to do something before the end of the year in terms of taking the, as you can say it any way you want to, the final actions to accomplish what we want to accomplish. So if I, if I get a commitment, you know, from, you know, just verbally from you guys and, and tonight, that you, we're in agreement, you know, with moving in that direction for the final solution, I can go along with, you know, not acting on this. I know I've had, I feel comfortable from my meetings with Andrew, Mr. Timberlake, and the committee that I've been assigned to, that we are indeed heading in that direction. But have we finalized it? No. But I think we can, don't you, Bill?
I agree, David, with everything you said, and, and none of the particulars that you talk about are in this ordinance, as it sits in front of us, on how to mitigate, incentivize, whatever the terms you want. We, and we had a fair amount of dialogue with Andrew, myself, and you and Karen on, on, on RC. And, and so, you know, while I understand the intent here from the Planning Commission and staff, you know, I think we can get there knowing where our heads were a little bit and, and then hearing from.
Well, the final, the final decision, I, yeah, Bill, I agree with you. You know, the, the final decision is going to be made by this board. I mean, whatever we recommend is still going, the final decision is going to be made by the board. What I think the Planning Commission did was genius. They, they came up with a way of getting at a problem that was pretty much, people said, "Oh, you, the Gordian knot," I think is what you referred to it as, Carson. They, they were looking at a way where they could get at this and stop the bleeding. And this was their way of doing that. And, you know, I give them a lot of credit for stepping out there and doing it. And it's easier building on what somebody else has done. So when I saw what they had done, you know, I said, "Well, you know, maybe there's something we can go a step further and just do the downzoning and do it in such a way that it makes sense to people." Because, you know, we had the three goals. We wanted to be fair to the existing landowners. Okay? The second goal we had was we wanted to make sure that this constituted good planning. The third goal was we've said to the board, "We want good economic development in this county." Now, this has been an impediment for staff, and it's been an impediment for, sometimes for the development community, not knowing how they're going to work with the by right and the other property that they're going to have to rezone. So I think what I have proposed or some variation of it, we can get there. And Billy, I'll defer to you. You know, you.
It sounds like to me that, that y'all are agreeing that we could do, we could vote this down and let the work group continue its work and deliver the good.
I just want some commitment from this board of a sense of where we're going makes sense to you, you guys. You know, that's why I'm saying, if I'm all wet, or if you think Billy and I and Karen are all wet on where we're headed, you need to tell us.
Well, David, I, and I agree. I think, um, we can get there. I think we had a meeting and we spent, I don't know how long, it was quite a while on this conversation, and then what we realized was this is part of every, you know, we were focused, so we kind of said, "Okay, let's get some data on this, not put it on the back burner, but work towards comprehensive plan." And then knowing that we were asking staff to get us some analytics on the dollar reduction and then how could you incentivize and, and all that, so it is maybe fair, fairer, if you want to use that word, to the, the existing landowners. And, uh, you know, and it ties into somewhat to the comprehensive plan map a little bit, the future land use map and things too. So I think we can get there, and I agree, we need to be there before, before, well before February.
Let me cut, let me cut through this Gordian knot again. Y'all are playing out the discussion that y'all are having as a committee here tonight, basically. I don't want to do that.
Okay.
We charged y'all of doing this work, not to do it here in this room with the audience and all of us sitting second-gassing one another.
No, the reason, no, I'm going to disagree with you, Mr. Chairman. The reason we're doing this out here now is because I want some feedback from this board that's going to make the final decision. If I'm not going in the right direction, or Billy's not going in the right direction, or Karen, y'all need to tell us. I don't want to come and present a package to y'all that you're not going to accept, and you know you're not going to accept. That's why I'm trying to keep you informed.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, can I try to help? So I think what's before us tonight is an ordinance. Adopt this piecemeal, in my estimation, and I shouldn't use that term piecemeal because I know where the Planning Commission was working hard. And to, to Mr. Williams's point, they were, for lack of a word, they were sending us a signal, "Wake up, guys." But, but, but stripping the uses out, I think is just piecemeal. I think it's a bigger picture. I think we can get there as, as a committee, but I do think Mr. Williams's point is a little bit that if, if he and I are barking up the wrong tree, and we're out here beating their head against the wall, you know, this ordinance is before us. So what David's saying is if we're not going to get to that point, then he may choose to go and support this ordinance as it sits in front of us and start the process.
Billy, I think you summed it up very well. That's exact, you're exactly right. Thank you. You cut to the point much better than I did.
So what's the pleasure of the board vis-à-vis zero two eighteen dash zero six?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Nordvig?
This board has proven over time that it's fairly slow at getting things done, especially when. when it comes to development. We got a 2010 comprehensive plan, and in a few months, it's going to be 2019. The committee work is important, but if this is a step in the right direction, which is how it's been portrayed by staff, and I don't hear anybody disagreeing with that, I think we ought to go ahead and do it because it gets us that much closer to what everybody's saying is the end goal. And I would also like to ask if you want to invite Mr. Cox to comment at all, we've got somebody from the planning commission there, don't mean to put you on the spot, Bill, but if he wants to weigh in.
Bill, do you have anything succinctly to help us here?
Good first time tonight.
Keyword?
Planning commission looked at this not as an endpoint, exactly what you all talked about. We didn't think we could bring to you, do away with RC, and that it would go anywhere. We would much rather see something started, if it's going in the right direction, in your opinion, tonight, for wherever the final solution is. Mr. Melton's exactly right. This is a band-aid. But what it does do is remove from RC the auto-intensive uses, which are the ones that tend to give the most difficulty to staff and to y'all and to us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I'm entertaining a motion to approve or disapprove this ordinance.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance 0218-06, and that's in accordance with public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice.
Is there a second to this motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and second the motion. Do we need a public hearing here?
I don't, I think we closed the public hearing, all we did was defer decision.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Any final comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Tucker, I am, you know, while I think it's, Mr. Cox said it very eloquently, I just think it's a stopgap, and I'm not into this stopgap. I think we peel, peel the band-aid off and move on, and, you know, and I think we can get there, I think we can get there within a reasonable timeframe. You know, we have another meeting this week, we're pretty, I think we're moving pretty close to bringing something forward on the comprehensive plan, and then, you know, we can wrestle with the RC, but I am not in support of a stopgap in this situation. I would prefer to peel the band-aid all the way off.
Ms. Cavill?
I am uncomfortable with the, I understand the auto-intensive attempt. Mr. Cox, thank you for explaining that. Because prior to you saying that, I felt like some of these users were very arbitrary that I could not understand, and I've been trying to get my head around those since this first came out many months ago. I still, however, don't understand how a liquor store is any less auto-intensive than a museum, or how an animal grooming facility is any less auto-intensive than a veterinary clinic. So while I, I agree that this has been a great step in the right direction, and I appreciate the planning commission's willingness to roll up their sleeves and, you know, put a stake in the sand and say, move, I am not comfortable with passing this. I would rather pull the band-aid off and, and move forward and not continue to be, be slow. Go get, you know, bring, bring it back. Let's do it.
Mr. Williams, final comments?
You heard it, Dave.
I, I can't disagree with any of you guys. You know, the, I totally agree, and, you know, that's what I was trying to get at tonight. Where are we going to have finally the courage to pull the band-aid off? And I hope we will. I hope we will, because, you know, and I don't, and again, I don't disagree, and Andrew, I don't disagree with what you or Bill said. I'm concerned right now if the band-aid doesn't get pulled off for whatever reason. I want to at least have a beachhead in trying to address the issue, and that's why I'm going forward tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Nordvig, any final comments?
Trying to move the football downfield, and I'll take 10 yards and a first down instead of a touchdown.
Thank you, sir. Clerk of the Board, would you poll us?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Melton?
No.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, there was a request from staff, since it has passed three to two, whether you are open to grandfathering, there's three, I think it's three pending applications, a couple of restaurants and a, and a Dunkin' Donut, that you would actually have to take an affirmative vote to grandfather those three applications.
Those uses would no longer be.
Because those uses would no longer be permitted by right in RC, so you would need a.
So they, these projects are already projects on, on the drawing board?
On the books and nearly ready to go.
Do we need a public hearing or anything?
No, just, just, just a formal, it just takes, unless the board formally grandfathers something, it isn't grandfathered. So we'll just take a motion to grandfather the existing pending applications.
Brief discussion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have consistently said if something was an application and voted for that, since I was on the planning commission through the board, that if something was an application and the rules changed, you applied when the rules were this, going forward, the rules change, you stay, you play by the rules of when the game started. After the game's over and the rules change, then you get held to the new rules. So I, I'm in support of allowing grandfathering the applications that are in, in process with planning department for, and I don't feel like we need to name the businesses, I just
No, just say, or just the current pending applications for development in RC, I believe it's only three, we checked.
I'm in support of allowing grandfathering those applications to be granted to the old standards versus the new standards.
Are you making a motion?
That's a motion, right, Bill?
Yes.
A second? Comments, questions? So basically, you're grandfathering the three that are already in the pipeline?
Current pending applications, which it's my understanding are three.
All right. Clerk, if you would.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Latchen, for catching that. Moving on to item 8B, an appointment to the Social Services Board, Mr. Melton?
Glad you didn't come sit in the audience tonight. Gabe Bartlett has been serving on this board and has done a wonderful job, and, you know, I would like to, she's made an application to reappoint, I'd like to reappoint her to the board.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Item 8C, approval of Palatine Community Policy and Management Team roster update. I'd like to nominate, or renominate Phoebe Wright as apparent representative to be on the board through June 30th, 2020. A second, please?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Moving on to 10A, I'm going to propose we do away with 10A unless somebody objects strenuously. I didn't get any feedback from anybody about this issue, so I assume there's not any interest in doing this.
Do you want to have dialogue on it or not?
You got something to say, go ahead.
So I understand the intent behind proposing that we.
I just offered to take it off the table. If you're going to, if you're going to discuss against it, why bother?
Then I won't say anything.
Okay. Any other comments about this proposal? It's dead. Moving on to item 12, our second public comment period. Is anybody here wishing to speak to us on any issue, please come forward.
Jim Conca, once again, 1922 Mosley. I wanted to thank the board for their consideration on the ordinances that I spoke about. I do feel it necessary, though, to correct the statement made by another board member, and this goes to the timeline. The statement was something, something to the effect of Mr. Conca knew this was a 45-foot rule when he moved here, and I'm going to correct that. In 1993, Mr. Conca moved to Palatine County, and the adjoining parcel, which was the stave mill headworks, was an A1 parcel. And sometime in the, that was 25 years ago, and in the 15 to 20-year ago timeframe, that parcel was sold and was signed, went in the ground, it came up for rezoning to I1. At that point, I remember clearly coming in before the, the board at the time, voicing my objections to that because there was no specific plan for that parcel, and I looked through the, the accepted or named uses that were allowable to an I1 district, and this is your language, not mine. Some of those uses were weapons manufacturer, dry cleaning plant, which involved chemicals, adult bookstore, and I don't remember specifically if there was a 45-foot structure height at the time, but I objected to all of those because none of them, nothing was specifically slated to go there. And it was my opinion at the time that the board was about just giddy that someone wanted to rezone to I1 would make that parcel more, you know, adaptable to, for someone to come into the county, and it's the same, same discussion we're having today. And what do we have from that? It's been 15 to 20 years, we have nothing. We have encouraged nothing by rezoning that to I1, and I don't think there's a single person here on this board who can tell me who my neighbor's going to be. Is it going to be a weapons manufacturer plant, a dry cleaning plant, or an adult bookstore? And I don't know if the current list of undesirable businesses includes those anymore, I haven't kept up with it, but I've been consistent in what I've objected to and what, what I feel that we should allow come to this county. And I, I'm afraid I have to disagree. One of the citizens that came before me was praising this board for how well they've handled things relative to our neighbors in Cumberland County who have welcomed this landfill project, and, and I think that for some of us, we're dangerously close in principle to accepting something like a landfill, when I look at some of the decisions made to, you know, play fast and loose with the rules when it's in a district that's not your own. So that's my two cents worth. I want to kind of thank the board for their consideration on their vote.
Thank you, Mr. Conca, for correcting the message for the record. Any other comments from the public for us tonight? Anyone wish to say anything to us tonight? Seeing no one, I close the second public comment period. Mr. Latchen, do you have anything to share with us tonight?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Voorhees, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Forth, have any comments? Mr. Williams?
No, sir.
Mr. Nordvig?
No, thank you.
Mr. Cavill?
No, sir.
Mr. Melton?
Couple of quick points. I was invited to participate in the YMCA Bright Beginnings program, and my wife and I went to Target and had a young lady that we actually got to shop with for about 45 minutes or so, and from my understanding from Mr. Foster, the YMCA director, there was over 100 children that participated in that program, actually Brad, and several of his deputies were there that evening with, in helping out, and it was truly a great event for, for the people. And one thing I'll share is the young lady, we, they told you to get shoes first. So we went and got a pair of shoes, and as soon as we got the shoes, she said, I'm hungry. Do we have to get the rest? And she, because she wanted a Chick-fil-A sandwich. But, so I guess her priorities were in the right place. The last thing, as, as the sheriff just recently had an event to recognize a young man, and I just wanted to speak to it very briefly. Josh Barnes, Deputy Josh Barnes, was recognized by his peers and for his efforts in the accident that happened out on 13 with lifting of the vehicle with several other citizens. And I've known this young man since he was in junior high school. He actually is my younger son's wife's brother, and he's a fine young man, and I can see him reacting in the calm way he did to bring some closure and do this to Josh Barnes. Kudos, I know the sheriff did a wonderful job recognizing him. Last thing is Rocky Ford Road. For, for those of you not aware, as part of the request that I had for a study on the road and conditions and riding with VDOT, they checked the bridges out, and one of the bridges was failing. It, it was a 15-ton bridge that was only handling five tons, and so therefore it would not have handled school buses. VDOT was able to rally and find some emergency funds. They closed the road this past Friday. Their goal was to have it done before school starts, have a bridge replacement on Rocky Ford Road so the school buses can go down that road. That area had just been redistrict from Flat Rock to Palatine Elementary School, which the commute would have been much longer had they had to backtrack. So I applaud VDOT for that. Lastly, to Mr. Conca, I apologize for misstating on any information, and thank you for correcting us.
Thank you. Mr. Latchen, would you take us to the closed session, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Palatine County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following. First, discussion of the performance of the county administrator. Second, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters concerning alleged misconduct at a county firehouse. Whereas pursuant to section 2.2, 3711A1 and A8 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Palatine County does hereby authorize discussion of four stated matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
Someone make that a motion, please.
I'm so moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in closed session. Thank you. Mr. Voorhees, would you check on us and our certification, please?
I hereby reconvene this regular meeting of the Palatine County Board of Supervisors as an open meeting and request the clerk of the board to conduct a roll call certification vote of the supervisors to be included in the amendments of this meeting.
Board members, do you certify to the best of your knowledge that, one, the only matters discussed in the closed meeting were public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just conducted? Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Actions toward the board, Mr. Melton?
I have a motion that we approve, as we've done for our county employees and constitution offer a 2% raise for our county administrator, Mr. Ted Voorhees, retroactive back to January, excuse me, July 1st.
Windfall. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that.
Is this just a straight motion, Tom?
It's a straight motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we've got four to one. We are adjourned.
At 9:42.
Hope your daughter's okay in the car. Your car insurance doesn't go up too much.
The second one's going to happen.